Lynn, I'm just gonna start. Time is 5:00 PM. The Warwick City Finance Committee is now open. If I may have a motion for acceptance of the minutes for the meeting held on June 6th.
Don't move. Second?
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor? Aye.
Be right back.
Aye. I said, my voice carries. Trust me.
Do you accept the minutes?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Aye.
We're on the PCR 73-22, the bid package. So we're discussing bid number one, found on page one, 2023-077, electricity contract. If I may call Mr. Schaefer and Ms. Pesca to the microphone. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Director.
Good afternoon. You have a communication, a two-page communication. This one major thing that has changed since then, let me just, you approved a contract with the same vendor, the league vendor that was selected by the league five years ago. Their contract had been expended with the league for another three years. Our contract for electricity runs out in December, this December. And it's been the case for many years, you don't want to wait till December to lock in because when the winter starts rolling around, prices go up. Independent of the winter, prices have been going up, not as bad as petroleum prices, but bad. And there's been a lot of fluctuation. There was a good day, actually Friday. The energy markets are closed today because of the holiday. And I gave you a recommendation to go to a price of agreed with three-year contract at .1175 kilowatt hour. We're currently paying through December, and that will continue, .0710. So you're talking a price increase of over 50%, although it's only going to be for half a year. So it's a little over 25%. I've given you some information on rates that you would pay if you went through National Grid. And in the winter, you would probably be paying, last year, people who were under that plan were paying over twice, three times what we're paying right now, and twice what this contract, that's the kind of expectation. Now, we've been approached by, so that's another option is just when the contract runs out in December and just go whatever price, what's the, I forget the term for it is called, and there's two different classifications, industrial, commercial, we're about half and half. But it's almost certain to be much higher than what we would get from locking in a three-year contract. We've also been approached by brokers. There are brokers out there that want to, they can't really explain how they're going to do it. They won't give you a price. And what I can give you is a guaranteed price. And we may have mud on our face six months from now. I can't tell you, the energy prices could collapse and we will have locked in this price. That's the way it is. On the other hand, we protect ourselves against the worst. This pricing will get us to our budget, and we budgeted some substantial increases, and we knew this was going to happen. There will be another increase in '24, probably over 20%. '25 will be flat because we have locked in for three years. We're talking the city spending around $2 million this year, $2.5 million, that is this current year, fiscal year '22, around $2.5 million in fiscal year '23, but a quarter of that is enterprise funds, mostly sewer. The other thing that's going on was mentioned just in one sentence here. I didn't really think it was going to happen. But there's a renewable energy standards bill which has passed both branches. I don't believe the governor signed it yet. And that's going to add, at the end of the contract, another at least four and a half percent to the price. It's going to get added on to our pricing, unless we sign a contract by July 1. There's grandfathering in the bill that will freeze us at approximately 21.5% surcharge, which we're already in our base. But it will prevent us from going up to 26.5%. So I didn't really, wasn't certain that was going to happen at the time I sent this communication, but it's definitely going to happen. Or it's certainly passed both branches, you know, unless the governor gets some new wisdom, some new advice on this, maybe from some municipalities because we're all facing this. But we can grandfather us in to not paying that additional surcharge for the, over the three-year period of our contract, if we sign a contract before July 1. Now, they sent us, Constellation Power Options sent us pricing at 3:30 this afternoon at .1174. I have sent you a communication requesting approval for not more than .1175. And I said, if they don't make it, we'll come back next month. Well, my guidance has changed a little bit because of this piece of legislation. Because we're not going to come back, we come back next month, we're going to have that additional surcharge that we're going to be locked into. So the one thing that I would like to do is amend my guidance to you to go to .1180. And I've talked to Pat about this. That will give us, they're going to give us additional pricing tomorrow morning. Because we have to price on the day that we sign the contract. I wanted, I'd like to have just a little more flexibility in case there's something bad in the energy markets tomorrow morning. It was a good day Friday, might be a little bit better. It could even be less than what they proposed here, .1174. But I don't want to lose this opportunity because of the rest bill. So I'd like to amend my guidance to you to .1180, and hopefully we'll have a contract tomorrow morning if you approve this.
Thank you, Director. Ms. Pesca, did you want to follow up?
I was just going to add that I do have copies of the correspondence we got at 3:30. If anybody would like to see the rate that he just threw to the clerk, I can give it to you.
Thank you.
Just one thing, in that rate, for example, they quoted us also for just a one-year contract. And that would be .1429 as opposed to .1174. They're clearly, the options market, the futures market is clearly pricing in a reduction in price as we go forward. But right now, right now, we're in a bad period. So my best judgment is that we should accept this. And I'm ready to respond to any questions.
Thank you. We're just going to take a moment to review some of the information. So since we will be seeking to amend, I'll give the city clerk a moment, and then I will ask for a PCR. Thank you so much. Bid 2023-077 is now PCR 70-22. It's not? Oh, I apologize. Correction, it's now PCR 74-22. So just for clarification, Mr. Director, you're looking to amend, I'm sorry, give me one moment. On the paperwork, we had, you had the bid at .1175.
Yeah, I'd like to change that.
And you'd like to amend it to .1180?
Yes.
Thank you. So because we have the change, what I'm going to do, so we can allow for a discussion, I'm going to request a motion for PCR 74-22.
I move that we amend 74-22 as requested.
Second?
We have to refer to the election. Do we have to? Verbal on that as amended?
Oh, I apologize. Okay. Second?
Second, I second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Discussion. Are there any questions from members of the committee? Councilman Gethard.
So what you're presenting to us here, basically your recommendation is to lock in where things are at, given instability and not knowing what's happening in the future. That, how much of these, I mean, because they're, obviously they're moving around every day, how much, how turbulent, how volatile has it been over the last few weeks?
I can. So just pricing on a megawatt hour basis, and I've got a, they send us pricing every day. So at March 10th, just as far as I go back, it was $165 per megawatt hour. It is now $117.10, and that's down about 80 cents from Thursday's close. So that's, so you've seen just since March, approximately a 17% increase.
And prior to this, what was the, are we emerging from a three-year contract with Constellation or do we have a different agreement?
The contract ends in December. So we're going to keep paying .071 through the meter read in December. That's the way the contract reads. So some meters are read December 3rd, some are read December 29th. I think the date may be in the old contract, something like December 20th. Any meter read after December 20th will be under the new pricing.
Got it. And when we put together the budget assumptions around electricity, did you have a rate in mind?
I had a percentage increase in mind, which was higher than what, because I knew we had locked in price through December. I was really only looking at a higher price for the second half of the year.
Yeah. Okay.
So it's going, we're really going from 2 to 2.5 million, which is what we got budgeted. But that only reflected having to pay that higher price the second half of the year.
And refresh me, are we taking a portion of that 2 million from ARPA funds? Or are we using ARPA funds for offset?
When I, that was part of the general fund pledge of costs that I hope will not be reoccurring long-term. And in fact, in '25, it will flatten out because we have a guarantee. Hopefully after that, and we've seen this happen, we could have declines going forward. So there was an assumption of the 10 million, a little over 10 million in ARPA funds we were using for the budget, that 2 to 3 million were for costs that would not be reoccurring long-term.
Okay, got it. And then just generally for electricity spend in the city, does Constellation offer any incentives around efficiency projects or any of that?
They have, the league signed a contract with Constellation and a nonprofit company called Power Options. And Power Options has a whole series of consultants. We haven't used them enough, to be honest. And I've talked to one of them a couple of times in terms of, you know, assistance in different solar issues. And there's a fellow, Walter Gray, who I've talked to a number of times. And I hope to get Tom and his staff together with them. So they offer some good consulting services on the kinds of things you're talking about.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just encourage us to take advantage of whatever we can, but this seems like a prudent approach. So, thank you.
No further questions from the committee? Councilman Ricks.
Thank you. I have a question about how this is structured as per the memo dated June 9th, and also looking at the emails dated June 20th. So from what I'm seeing in the memo, it's showing that for a three-year contract to Constellation, December 2022 through December 2025, it would be at that 11.75 cents. And so.
Not to exceed 11.75, and the committee just amended that to 11.80.
Right, thank you. And so I guess that my question on that is, compared with the following paragraph where there's the indication that there would be a certain price for fiscal year '23, and then would there be a higher price for fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25 that we're locking in? Or is it a matter of we're locking it in, it's going to be the same rate for three years?
Same rate for three years. But the thing that I was, we only have to lock in that rate for half this year because we're locked in from the approval of October 2019 into that .710 price until December.
Okay, that makes sense. I guess in that situation, if we are getting the advantage of being locked in at these rates, and then it turns out that the market rate ends up being higher, then obviously that's to our advantage. But if we lock in for a three-year contract, December 22 through December 25, and then, let's say, a year and a half from now, the rates end up plummeting for whatever reason. None of us can predict where the market will go. Would we have the ability to get out of what would then turn out to be a higher amount?
I would say no. That's the risk, and that's what I said. I may have mud on my face in my guidance to you.
Well, none of us have a crystal ball. If we did, then we'd all be millionaires.
I mean, obviously, the biggest driver on energy prices right now is natural gas. So you've got global issues in terms of supply in Europe right now, and conversion to liquefied natural gas that's happening to a lot of our product going over there. How all these things will play out, I can't tell you. But I can tell that the market is saying it's going to get better. We're going to give you a lower price if you sign a three-year contract because the futures markets are saying it's going to get better. But this prevents us from having some really catastrophic pricing this year or next year, certainly in the winter.
Right. Either way, it's a bit of a gamble, and we just have to make the best choice under those difficult circumstances. And I can certainly appreciate the approach in locking in a rate, even if, you know, it seems relatively high to what we're paying now. Because, you know what, we don't know where this market is going to go over the next three years. And perhaps it's better to lock in a rate as opposed to being at the mercy of the market. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lattesor.
Thank you, Chairman. So I don't have an issue with what you're proposing, Director. As a matter of fact, I'd point out that during the budget hearings, one of the items I kept pressing on and questioning and challenging was the significant increase in the budget items for all of the departments with regard to electricity. And the answer continued to come back that because of the significant increases occurring and expected, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I think I understood you to say that right now, from now until the end of December, we're paying .1065?
.0711.
.0711?
710.
From now until the end of December?
Till the meter read in December.
Right. And then you're looking to lock in with the amendment, .1180?
Yes.
For three years? I couldn't disagree with your reasoning based upon, you know, my observations that are going on with regard to electricity and gas and oil, the reluctance to increase production of either the gas or the oil. So as I rationalize it in my mind for supporting this, it's going to be that three-year average. How do we end up, you know, in the three-year average? And based upon what you said and my observations, I can't come up with a better solution than what you have right now. But I will be keeping an eye on those electricity items in all of the department's budgets because of everything that everyone was pressing on during the budget hearings. So we'll keep a really close eye on that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions, comments from members of the council? Questions, comments from members of the public? Question, please, to the microphone. Identifier, please, South, please. We just, if you hold on one moment, she'll turn on the microphone.
Okay, I'm Rick Casella. I live at Ward 1. Something just occurred to me. You had said earlier that in the event that we budgeted monies that go beyond the cost of electricity, we may have a surplus of money that we've allowed for. You said, what, $2.5 million, and you thought we might spend two? So there was a possibility we would spend less?
Mr. Schaefer?
Is that correct?
No, I, we look like we're going to spend around 2 million this year. We have budgeted $2.5 million for next year. That's what I said.
Okay, so this year, we're going to spend two, and I think we'll spend two and a half. Is there anywhere in our agreement with them that we can buy out of our?
No.
We can't buy out of it and then re-up? Okay. Because if we had the savings, we would invest it in buying up to a lower number. Okay. That was my first question.
That's the risk, as Councilman Ricks talked about. There's no way out. So that's the risk that the energy market will collapse, and we'll be stuck paying a higher price.
In my industry, if you want to buy out of your pre-qualification, you can buy extra points. So that's my question. And just a housekeeping thing, when you did the motion for PCR 74-22, you asked for a motion to amend his recommendation, which was, right?
Yes.
And change it to PCR 74-22 and have a new number, correct?
Because we amended it, we had to call out a PCR 74-22, yes.
Yeah, but the way he phrased it, I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Sure.
Is he phrased it amendment to PCR 74-22, when he might have said a sign number 74-22 to that, right? Is that how it goes? I'm trying to learn.
I made the mistake. I said PCR 70-22. She said, no, it's 74. So he said correction 74-22 because I asked for an amendment on that.
Because then he just seconded, and I didn't know if you had corrected. Because then he just seconded it, and I didn't know if you had corrected.
Oh, I see.
Very good, okay.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments from members of the public? Thank you. May I have, uh, we already have a motion? Well, we got to vote on the amendment first. May we have a, no? All right, so, we, when we originally did it, we said, to amend, we had a motion, we had a second. So we have to vote on that? Then we vote on as amended?
So the item before us at this time is, uh, was assigned, it was originally the first bid, 2023-077. It was a signed PCR 7422.
Yes.
And the committee had voted to amend, to adopt the Director's amendment request to add the .005 to the kilowatt hours, which was, uh, moved and seconded and agreed to. So the item before us, after getting all public and committee input, is now, uh, appropriate to be moved with any recommendation as amended.
Thank you. I make a motion to move favorable action on PCR 74-22 to amend from .1175 to .1180.
Sorry if I was too lengthy in that. Uh, if, if the intent is to move, the, the appropriate motion is favorable as amended.
I move favorable as amended. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Well, sadly enough, so am I. Okay. Bid number two, 2023-point-dash-046, street improvements. Hi, Christie.
Good evening. Uh, first off, I would like to amend this bid award to add three vendors.
This will be PCR 75-22? Go ahead, Christie, thank you.
Um, we request to add T. Miozy Incorporated, Cardi Corporation, and Deambra Construction as additional vendors, uh, along with J. H. Lynch.
Give me one moment. So your rec, request is to add Miozy, Cardi, and Deambra to the recommended, also with J. H. Lynch and Sons?
That's correct.
Thank you. So just for, so we're clear on this. I want to make sure. Please, one person.
Uh, so it's, uh, your option to either proceed with the amendment first and then solicit input, or if you want to solicit all input and then move the amendments, it's your, your discretion.
So I just move as amended? I mean, not as amended, I apologize.
If, if you want to put the Director's, um, request in play and then continue the rest of the hearing on that, it would be, uh, a motion to amend to add the three additional vendors, uh, Miozy, Cardi, and Deambra, a second in the vote of the committee, and then continue with the discussion.
Thank you. In a mo, um, I'm going to seek in a motion, a motion for PCR 75-22 to add Deambra, Miozy, Cardi to the recommended bidder of J. H. Lynch. All those in favor? Wait, correction, we're going to have a conversation. Thank you.
So I also just wanted to add that the funding request is an amount of $5 million for a six-month period, so that would be date of award for six months.
Got it, thank you. Any questions from members of the committee? Councilman Foley?
How you doing, Chris? Oh, Eric, how I? Just for the record, why are we adding these vendors?
So, I sent the memo out, I'm sure you all have that. Um, originally, we had five bidders. Cardi was the low bidder. Narragansett Improvement Company was the second lowest bidder. They challenged Cardi's bid on the grounds that they penny bid items, and there is language in the contract that indicates that, um, discourages that. Uh, we had discussed internally whether or not that was enough reason to throw out the bid, and the city solicitor indicated that there was enough reason to throw out the bid. So that's what we did. But then we had discussions with Narragansett Improvement, and they indicated that they based their asphalt prices on the assumption that there would be an escalation clause, which a lot of paving contracts have, that essentially allows for the price of as, as the price of asphalt goes up or down, the cost of the mix goes accordingly as well. We don't have that in this bid. Um, so when we told Narragansett Improvement that we didn't have that, they said, okay, I can't hold our, we can't hold our prices, so we're going to withdraw a bid. That meant that if Cardi was excluded as a penny bidder, Miozy had an item they penny bid. Deambra had several items that they penny bid. So that left only Lynch. That's why the original, um, recommendation came down as just Lynch. But then further discussions about the penny bid, and also being able to have multiple vendors, that kind of brought us to this point. We're not obligated to throw out a bidder because of they, because they penny bid. It's more the city's discretion. Um, there are reasons why penny bids are bad. Because vendors will try and talk you out of those items. We asked Cardi last year to reclaim several roads, and they flat-out said, "We can't, we're not going to do that because we don't make enough money doing that process." So that, and that's an item that they just bid low on. Never mind if a contractor penny bid an item. They're certainly going to push back against doing that. So by awarding all these vendors, it allows us to get the best deal for the city based on, um, whoever put in the lowest prices, we can work with them on the paving. Similarly, Lynch, uh, the benefit of having Lynch on board is that they are the paving company for National Grid. So currently, we will pave the road, and National Grid will reimburse us. That reimbursement rate is $10.50 per square yard. The bids that we received in this package for that same process, the lowest, um, the lowest bidder is at $11.28. So our reimbursement for that work would be less than we, what we would pay for it. Now, back in the day, when National Grid only paved half the road, it wouldn't matter. We would take that over and get reimbursed for it and go curb to curb. But now, with the new state law requiring for them to go curb to curb, it makes more sense for us to let Lynch, or National Grid's paving company, pave those roads. It saves us money, um, because it doesn't make sense to pay 11.50 and then get reimbursed 10.50, when Lynch can just do it for free. But now having Lynch on board as a contractor, what that would allow us to do is to say, okay, National Grid's requirement only goes to this block. We want you to go the next two blocks and have it be one continuous project. So that's why, that's why it would be benefit to have Lynch, that, that's why it would be beneficial to have Lynch on board as well. The other vendors, um, Miozy, Cardi, and Deambra, they all have, um, items that they're low in that we use a lot. Um, you know, Cardi is lowest for, um, let me see. So Cardi would be the lowest for the reclaiming process. That's when you pulverize the road, and then you put back binder and top. Miozy has the lowest price for surface course. That's the asphalt that goes on top, the riding surface that is a little bit finer and makes for, um, you know, essentially the top layer of asphalt. Uh, Deambra, they have the lowest priced for, um, for the, for the overall, uh, reclaiming, because they have the lowest price for binder. So if you're doing that whole process, they might be the better bidder. But like we saw last year, when Cardi outright refused to go and reclaim a road, um, it's important to have a backup. If we award just one, and we have this fight, then we're not paving. And that's the other thing we're up against. We lost a significant amount of time in this program, um, because it was relatively late in the year when Miozy and Cardi approached us and said, "We can't hold our current asphalt prices. Otherwise, we were just going to extend the existing contracts." So when that happened, we had to scramble a little bit, get these bids back out on the street. And that's why we're talking about paving, and it's already the end of June. You know, ideally, we would have been having this discussion a month and a half ago. So by awarding multiple vendors, we can get out in front of it and, and, you know, kind of push them to pave as much as possible in the season that we have left.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions from the committee? Councilman Gebhardt?
So thanks, Director. So just practically, on a day-to-day basis, how does this work? Um, if there's a road that needs to be paved or reclaimed or, or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, whether or not it's reclaimed or milled and overlaid is based on the condition. If you're driving over a road and a pothole is, you know, two inches down, the milling machine's not even going to touch that. So that's the type of road that you would reclaim. But you pulverize the hole 10 to 12 inches, you mix the asphalt in with the gravel, you compact that, sets up a nice base, then you put, um, what is it, two inches, two inches of binder and an inch and a half of top. That's essentially a brand-new road. That road's going to last you 15 to 20 years without touching it. Um, the, so, so that's the first, that's the first thing we look at, right? Like, what, what process are we going to use? You know, we would probably cluster a lot of them together. We're not going to mess with the contractor and say, oh, you do this road, but now you go do this one right next to it, and like that. We would probably cluster them together so they're working in a neighborhood, they can get their work done. Now, so that's the kind of thing we're looking at. Uh, certainly, with this approach, is it going to be more work for DPW? Absolutely. You know, if we only had one vendor, we're just turning them loose and sending them out on streets, that would be easy. For us to come back and have to do a little bit more analysis, that's fine. But it will, it is something that will ultimately save the taxpayers money, so.
We like the sound of that. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Questions for members of the council? Councilman Lattesor?
Thank you, Chairman. Eric, this bid that we're speaking about tonight, it's, it's strictly for street improvements, right? Streets and roads?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's also, there's some sidewalk components in there if necessary. But yeah, for the most part, you're talking sidewalks, curb, roads.
Okay. So, like I said, street improvements. Tonight, you said it, um, at least twice, so I'm going to ask a little more detail on it. You said that Cardi refused to reclaim, um, a road or two or a couple of roads because, uh, they couldn't do it for that price, um, various reasons. Which roads were that, was that?
Burgess, De Soto, which are over off of Strawberry Field Road, I believe?
Burgess?
Burgess, De Soto. And then there was Spadina, which is down in Connecticut.
Savannah?
Spadina. S.P.A.D.I.N.A. Those were the three.
That they refused to do-
Correct.
-because of the numbers.
Yeah, I mean, they, you know, they weren't rude about it. They just indicated, listen, we don't make enough money reclaiming, so if there's something else we can do instead, we'd rather do that. Which, that's nice for them, that's, must be a nice luxury to have, but it doesn't help us.
But did, did they actually refuse to do it?
They didn't do it. I don't know what else I could say. I asked them to do it, and they said no. So that sounds like a refusal to me.
Oh, so they, so they did refuse to do it?
They, I asked them, they didn't want to.
You said they said no?
They didn't do it. The other contractor paved, I don't know what answer you want me to say.
This had nothing to do with, um, parking lots or, or any of that type of thing, right?
Well, we also asked them to pave City Hall parking lot, and they never showed up for that either. So that was another point of contention.
So, there's a difference between streets and parking lots? Particularly when, um, you're requiring a contractor to do it after hours, and they have to pay premium wages, prevailing wages, to do it after hours? There's a difference there between a parking lot and a street. That's why I asked the questions I asked in the first place. This isn't the first time I have a problem with this bid. I'm sure folks that were sitting here before remember the, the discussion. So we have a low bidder who is, um, 100, over $100,000 lower than the next bidder, and 300,000, I'm sorry, um, 800,000 lower than Lynch. I understand what you're up against with wanting multiple vendors. We've had these conversations a lot in the past year. I supported it for the same reasons, um, I had mentioned in the past. I understand it's difficult to get vendors, get staff, et cetera. But I still believe that the low bidder, the overall responsible low bidder, and I, I notice that I don't see that language in this position paper about paving. I don't see where it says typically, the typical language about overall responsible low bidder. I think that what should be occurring is that the overall low responsible, responsible bidder should be getting first digs at doing the work, especially where they're a Warwick contractor. But it doesn't seem that, you know, that's the direction that you're looking to go. What I'm hearing is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm hearing is that you're willing to select the low bidder on these respective items to do the work that they were the low bidder on. Is that accurate?
Yeah, yeah, to some degree.
So that brings me to another problem. You have two processes. We have different bids here. We have bids to reclaim, and then we have bids to apply the finished paving. So what I'm hearing is, you're going to be awarding whoever the low bidder is on the reclaiming to do that, and then whoever the low bidder is on the paving will do that part. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a large part of it, sir. That would certainly save the city money.
Maybe. And I have an objection to that, and I'm going to give you an analogy. In my business, that would be like saying, we're going to hire one company to come in and strip off the roof, do all the ice and water barrier, do all the step flashing detail, do all the chimney flashing, because that company was the cheapest on the removal. But you, you're cheapest on applying the roof shingles. So we're going to have you come in after, and you're going to apply the roof shingles. Now, at some point in the future, the roof leaks, or the asphalt sinks, or we have a sinkhole around a sewer drain, or a curb isn't right. The argument comes into, don't blame me, I didn't do the prep work on the roof. I didn't put down the ice and water, I didn't put down the step flashing and the lead flashing, I did the roof. The people who did the prep say, it's not my fault, I didn't do the roof, my work's all right. I see this problem occurring with the paving, the way you're talking about awarding it. Someone's going to come in, they're going to do the reclaim, they're going to do the roly, whatever they do. They're going to make sure that, you know, this is compacted correctly and processed, et cetera, et cetera. Then they pull out, let me finish, let me finish.
But I, I think you don't, I don't think you understand. We wouldn't have a piece deal like that.
No, I understand, I understand what you said. Let me finish.
Okay.
And then, what you said was, you're going to call in who the low bidder is to do the asphalt work, and they're going to come in and do the asphalt. So now, if we have a problem with that road, we have a sinkhole, uh, take Sandy Lane, right? That was the same contractor did the whole thing. Suppose something like that occurred- Suppose something like that occurs. Who's going to get the blame? Is it the one that did the reclaiming and the rolling and the prepping? Or is it going to be the company that came in to do the finished asphalt?
And that's why I wanted to cut you off, and I apologize for that. But we would hand over the whole street. If it was a reclaimed street, they would go soup to nuts on that one. So your analogy with regard to your business, it would be more like I have six houses, and I'm doing all this work to all six. I got a better price on these three, and I got a different price on these two. I would give you those three, and I'd give someone else those two. But I'm not, no, we're not going to micromanage it to the point where, you know, this group's going to raise the catch basins, this group's going to mill it, and this group's going to pave it. If we give you the road, you're going soup to nuts on that road. But this allows us to pick the vendor that'll do the cheapest, you know, the most inexpensive for that specific process.
So then, the low bidder is not necessarily going to be awarded the bid on what they were the low bidder on. I asked you in the beginning if the low bidder is going to be doing the milling work, and then you're going to bring in the low bidder for the asphalt to do the asphalt. You said yes. Now, it's a different explanation.
If I said that, I misunderstood your question before.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So now, what we're saying is, no. We're not necessarily going to give the low bidder on the asphalt the work. Now we're saying, we're going to take a look at this particular street, and there's milling and there's asphalt work, and because this person with the milling and the asphalt is cheaper than this one, that's what we're going to go with. They're cheaper on the milling, but they're not cheaper on the asphalt. So how is that any different than bidding a penny on a cement sidewalk that we haven't done in God-forsaken many years and high bidding something else? Or going with a low number on the milling, but then you have a much higher number on the asphalt? I don't get it. I don't understand how that works. So, and again, in my world, I bid a lot of work through a particular city. It's not the city of Warwick either. And they'll break that bid up into four, five, six components. It'd be roof, it'd be siding, it'd be windows, it'd be gutters. It could be decking. It's all broken up, and we have to itemize each bid. And as a contractor, we may choose to do the gutters and downspots a lot cheaper than other things because we're more effective at producing it. We can produce it a lot more economically than some competitors. They don't take the bid and say, "Okay, Mrs. Contractor, you got the low bid on gutters. You're going to get that. The siding is going to someone else. The roofing is going to someone else." No, it's one bid. Whoever the low bidder is, is the one that gets the work. So I don't understand how this process here is working with this asphalt. This has been going on for quite some time now. So I think it kind of goes against the grain of encouraging bidders to bid. We've been down this road for a very long time. White people aren't bidding. I have visited various entities to find out why they're not bidding. And we've got a situation here where one contractor is $800,000 lower than the lowest one and a couple hundred thousand dollars lower than the next lowest one. So I don't get it. And this whole thing just doesn't seem to be making a whole lot of sense to me in the process. So that's where I am with it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Council President McAllister.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I support this. I think it's very simple. This is the number-one issue we hear from constituents every single day. Roads, roads, roads. So the more companies that we have available to do it, the better. That's my opinion on this, that we will look for the best price, obviously. But these companies are working across the state, across New England, some of these companies. So they may not be available. We're already behind. We're already weeks behind on some of these projects. So we go to the first bidder. They may not be available for whatever reason. We go right to the next vendor. This is, like I said, the number-one issue we hear from constituents. This gives the city better options. If we only had the one bidder, exactly what the director, he gave an example. "We need this street done. We're not going to do that street for whatever reason." And then we're stuck now because, "Okay, thank you very much. We just go to the next vendor and get it done." So I completely support this. This is one of those occasions where I think having multiple vendors is crucial to the city of Warwick. It gives us more options. It does not hold us hostage to one company's schedule. They might not be able to get to Warwick. They have other projects that they're starting. Okay, we move to the next one. This gives Warwick a little more power. It gives Warwick a little more flexibility to tackle the number-one issue we hear from constituents. So I'm in support of this and support adding these additional vendors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Ricks.
Thank you, Chairman. So my concern on this is that if we have a bidding process as we do, and then we see some contractors come in higher than others, in this case, overall, J.H. Lynch came in approximately 20% higher than Carty, I want to make sure that on the respective jobs that are being awarded, that the city is paying as little as possible on each of the jobs. One thing that I'd like a little clarification about is when the example was given of, let's say that Lynch is already doing some work for National Grid, and there's a reimbursement that's being applied with that, then how exactly would it end up saving the city money if we're going and paving an extra couple of blocks if Lynch's prices are 20% higher, more or less, than Carty's prices?
The application that you're talking about, if National Grid installs a trench down a road, National Grid is obligated to pave that. Right now, we pave it, and National Grid reimburses us. National Grid reimburses us $10.50 per square yard. That's less than it would cost us to pave it, so we would lose money by paving it. If we just tell National Grid, "You have your contractor pave it. Now Lynch is paving it, and it's not costing the taxpayer anything. There's no reimbursement there. Lynch is working for National Grid, period, the end." But if they're going to stop at the end of that trench, and we want them to continue another block to just make it nice and tight, then we would have Lynch onboard with prices to ask them to do that. Without awarding Lynch, then there's no way to do that. Or we have another contractor stepping on Lynch's toes to do it, and that doesn't make any sense. That's what we're talking about.
I'm not entirely sure how that wouldn't necessarily make sense because everybody had an opportunity to bid here. If we're ever in a situation where we're making a decision of, "Okay, we need a trench to be filled in, and National Grid can take care of it for us without us having to pay one dime." Or we can have our contractor do it, and then our contractor is going to end up costing us more than what National Grid would reimburse us, then that decision right there, it seems to be a no-brainer that, under those circumstances, yeah, have National Grid fill in the trench. And then, if we do want to pave some additional blocks that are in the area, whether it's connected or not connected, then as much as it might seem a little bit rude to have two construction crews next to each other, I'm not sure why we would end up paying, we would want to pay 20% more if the construction crew doing that one particular job that they're being hired by National Grid to do, if they wanted to have Warwick's business, then they should have bid lower. I don't see why we would want to reward them for bidding higher. What if they had bid 100% as much as the lowest bidder? Then would we still have the same feeling? I'm kind of confused by that. I think that if it's going to save the city 10 grand or 20 grand or whatever it may be versus it'll save the city 100 grand or 200 grand or whatever higher hypothetical number, I think that, you know, if the practice is going to save us $10,000, then that's, every bid is meritorious as if it were to save $100,000.
Thank you, Councilman. Questions from the council that haven't been asked or discussed yet? Councilman Ladisor.
Thank you, Chairman. So I just want to address the issue of the multiple vendors. I want to make sure that there isn't a different spin on my position. I said in the beginning that I support multiple vendors. I said that I have supported multiple vendors for numerous things, tires, auto parts, et cetera. And I do. In a different economic climate, I would be pushing for a vendor. This is a different economic climate. We're in a very different situation. I understand multiple bidders. What I'm requesting with this bid is that the lowest bidder on a particular item be awarded the bid or given first dibs. If one of them want to say, "Nope, I'm too busy. I can't do it." Fine, then you go to the next bidder. That's all I'm asking, is that whoever the company is, the low bidder on those particular items, they get the first dibs. It's not because somebody's angry because they didn't pave a street last week. That's my point. So let's not make it a spin that I don't support the roads. I support the roads. Been fighting for the roads for 10 years, long before anybody got on a bandwagon in previous administrations for doing them. It's the process. Today, we don't have a lot of choice. We need multiple vendors. I get it. I agree. I'm just suggesting that whoever the low bidder is on a particular item, get the bid or at least get the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other follow-up questions? Councilman Ricks.
To briefly follow up, to avoid a situation where we would, as a city, end up paying more by one particular vendor being chosen first on a list over another, yet at the same time, I certainly recognize that the city has an interest in making sure that the work gets done on schedule. The way that, I recall, we resolved this a couple of years ago, where we had multiple bidders, was to award the contract to three different bidders, but for the lowest bidder in that circumstance, have them have a right of first refusal so that they're given the opportunity to do it at that lowest rate. But if, for whatever reason, they can't schedule it at the scheduling that the city of Warwick wants to see, then we can move along to the next bidder. So whatever language that we had from a couple of years ago for this same contract, I would move to amend such that the lowest bidder has a right of the first refusal. And as to all the technical language that would go into that, I would defer to the city council's listener and defer to the language that was used a couple of years ago, which I think, from what I recall, worked pretty well.
So we have a motion still sitting that we have to work through first. And so I'd like to, we can go back to that in a moment. I will speak on this now because I, you know, I allowed everyone else to speak on it. I support getting multiple vendors. There's still a lot of projects within the city. When myself and many members of this council voted on that, that bond to restructure or redo our roads, I don't want to be held up due to, you know, as I think it was mentioned earlier, that the bids that we had, the prices we had previously, all the vendors backed out because the cost of the material increased. We are now in a situation where we had to go back out to bid for that material, and everyone came back in. And there was an issue with penny bid, as is in the letter, where the vendors did not comply with the bid specifications by submitting unbalanced bidding on certain items. So therefore, personally, I feel that this is a fair thing. I also, I believe in having faith where there needs to be faith in everyone that's involved in this. We want the roads paved. We want to do it for the best price. And we certainly, I don't see where the benefit is of sitting there and assuming that the worst-case scenario is going to happen where if someone says, "Okay, I'm going to, like, the first right refusal," if you will, I'm going to have the faith and the trust in the DPW department in getting the bids and giving the first offer to the lowest bidder. So I'm, like many others, I'm very much in favor of this and with the bidders that are included because, quite honestly, I want to see these roads get done and completed and completed correctly. Thank you. So continuing with this, is there any questions or comments from the audience? Please state your name, and all I ask is that you direct all questions and comments to the chair. Thank you, sir.
My name's Rick Casella. I live in Ward 1. Two things. First is, can you ask him if he was suggesting that if Lynch is on a job for National Grid and they say, "Well, we'd like you to stay on," are you suggesting that we might be able to get Lynch's National Grid reimbursed price? Because I'm confused in thinking that we would hire them if they're higher, unless, of course, you said, "Hey, while you're here, give us that same price, and you can keep going." Is that what your goal will be, sir?
Director?
Through you.
No. So it's impractical for us to hire another vendor to jump right behind Lynch, right? So if Lynch goes to a point, working for National Grid, that they're, say they're 200 feet short of an intersection, Lynch isn't obligated to go that extra 200 feet. They're only obligated by grid to do where their trench is. So we would go to them and say, "Hey, can you take that extra 200 feet? Tighten it up, make it nice." And then, because we have them here, we have the prices to pay them for that.
Okay. So we're going to pay their price, no matter what they do. But it's more convenient, obviously, to have them finish, and they're there.
Yeah, we're going to pay the price.
I'm sorry. I should have been talking to you directly. My next question is, and you all may know the answer, but what is penny bidding?
So...
Just so I know, because you've used it a lot and I didn't.
Yeah, it's just like it sounds. It's just like it sounds. So contractors will, on items that they either don't anticipate doing, they'll put a unit price of a penny. In this particular instance, Carty put down a penny for per cubic yard of concrete. Councilman Ladisor referenced that. So 150 cubic yards, that was the quantity in the contract. They bid it at a penny. So that means that they would install almost 2,000 feet of concrete sidewalk, remove existing concrete sidewalk, reinstall new five-inch-thick concrete sidewalk, 2,000 feet of it, and the city would pay $1.50. That's what penny bidding is. They never anticipated doing that item, so they bid a penny for it. You wonder why they're $800,000 more than Lynch? Because Lynch bid that item realistically. That's what we have here. And when you have a vendor that penny bids that, do you think Carty's ever going to do a sidewalk for me? Not for $1.50.
Because they have the right to refuse. Okay, understood.
Mr. Chairman, a follow-up question? Pertaining to this item right here now that was just brought up.
Okay, Councilman, please.
Thank you. So, Eric, when was the last time the city did any sidewalks beyond 15, 20 feet of patching?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't either. I have no idea how long ago it was that we did any sidewalk stuff. And the way the bidding process works is if you want to take that risk and bid something for a dollar or a penny, that's your issue. If all of a sudden, you're told you're going to do 500 feet of sidewalk, you got to do it. And if you refuse to do the sidewalk, then you don't get the rest of the bid either.
That's right.
That's the way it works, right? That's the way, that's the way it works, right?
Exactly.
So, but now we're saying, no, that's not the way it works. Because you bid it for a penny because you assume that we're not doing any sidewalks. So you know what, we got to like boot that bid out. If you want to take that gamble and bid asphalt or cement or milling or whatever it is for a penny, then guess what? If we decide we're going to do a mile of sidewalks, you're doing that mile of sidewalks for a penny. Oh, I can't do that. Fine. Then you just lost the rest of the bid too. Right?
Correct.
This, this thing just is, just gets more and more complicated, you know, as we go along with the questions. But I don't think it's for us to judge. And by the same token, there's other items in this thing where you can do the flip on it. Instead of being a penny, the bid might be 300,000, when the next lowest bidder to it is 150,000. So why not throw out the 300,000 and say, that's ridiculous, you're out of here? Right? I don't know how we can sit here and pick and choose any of this without any fairness. And the fairness is, to the citizens of the city, we need to get these roads paved. We all agree. We all concur. We want to get them done as soon as possible. We all agree. We want to get them done as economically as possible. We all agree. But if you're the low bid on something, you're the low bid. And if you can't do it, then goodbye. See you later. So, I don't know.
Thank you, Councilman.
This is something we need to.
Understood. Thank you, Councilman. Back to the public. Were there any other further comments, questions from the public?
Rob Cody, Ward 7. Couple of quick questions. I understand that this is a, this bid award is for six months from the date of the award. Is that correct?
Yes.
So does the DPW have an itemized list of priority streets that are going to get paved, like as of today?
Director?
We have, we have a very long list of National Grid roads that we're going to monitor, that are required to be restored. We also have, we do have a handful of roads that the city is looking at doing with these vendors on our own.
So I guess my question would be, what's your comfort factor that will expend the $5 million in six months?
$5 million is a lot of money. I would say we're going to have to, we're going to have to scramble. Because obviously, six months takes us into January almost at this point. We're not paving into January. Realistically, we're paving for the next four months, five if we're lucky.
Right, because the asphalt plants close December 15th, at best-case scenario. So if we started July 1st, and we had perfect weather, we'd have to pave $208,300 a week. So I've been to these council meetings for many, many years when we've discussed paving, and we've never met that quota, right? We've never met the expenditure. I don't know what last year's numbers were, but I know the previous year in 2020, there was $5 million allocated, and we spent 1.9. And I had the same questions. The reality is, and I know with the cost escalations of commodities, you know, the expenses are going to be greater, but realistically, do you really think that in that six months, we're going to, we're going to spend that $5 million? I mean, is that a realistic number? Because to date, historically, we've never come close.
It's a valid question. It would be real tough to get to that $5 million, if I'm answering you honestly. Yeah, because we only have four months, and there's a lot of coordination that goes into it. You know, we want to do Diamond Hill Road. It's a mess. Diamond Hill Road needs National Grid to put a new main in there, so that's out. So every time we pick a road that we want to do, we got to go through all those extra steps of coordinating. And now $5 million, those numbers you talked about before, that included us paving, paying the contractor, and then getting reimbursed from National Grid. If we're having Lynch do that, and we're not even paying Lynch, we're going to have an even tougher time getting the $5 million. But that being said, that's not just a bad thing. We're still paving.
I think that's my point, right? If you're saying we're going to have a tough time meeting the $5 million, why are we going out to bid for $5 million? I think we should sharpen our pencils. I mean, if you could, if anybody in the city could point to one year where we paved half of that, I'd feel comfortable with commodities escalations. But we've never come close. So instead of fantasizing that we're going to pave $208,333 a week from July 1st until December 15th, inclusive of weather, it's unrealistic. And I've come here before and said this, and I've gotten laughed at, but we've never done it. So my suggestion is, and I love the fact that there's money in the budget because the roads are atrocious. They really are bad. And I want to see them done. But I just think a realistic budget and a realistic timeline would be more palatable to everybody that we really could, you know, ring the bell and expend the monies that have been tied up of the taxpayers for the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions from the public? Thank you. We have a motion standing. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, may I move PCR 75-22 as amended? Motion, we have a second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Item number three in the bid package is 2023-071, Munus Support Update and Licensing. Good evening, Mr. Carlucci.
Good evening. Phil Carlucci, MIS Director. This is a request under ordinance 566, exception to bid, to award Munus software maintenance contract to Tyler Technologies as the sole source in the amount of $240,313.84. This represents a 6.7% increase over the previous year. However, of 2.6% of that is actually for a new module that the finance department, in cooperation with the collectors department, was able to negotiate. It's about a $30,000 or $40,000 module. We actually got it for free with switching over to the Tyler Payments Plan. Because of that, there is a maintenance charge that goes along with that. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? No questions from the committee. Questions from the council? Questions from the public? Questions from the public? Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Next bid is bid 2023-055, Vehicle Body Repair and Painting. Good evening, Major Lima.
Good evening. Mike Lima, Major Work Police Department.
This is found on page 13. I apologize. Go ahead, Major.
In May, the police department went out to bid to see qualified vendors to establish a rotating list for the repairs of various vehicles maintained by the department under bid 2023-055. We received three qualified bids. We're recommending that this award be awarded to all three vendors, Alcon Autobody, Moon Autobody, and Gentile's Autobody. If approved, financing would come from the police department's operating budget code 76358, which is insurance proceeds, and code 30-330 Auto and Vehicle Maintenance for a total not to exceed $90,000. This is a one-year contract, beginning on August 23rd, 2022, ending August 22nd, 2023. The current contract expires on August 22nd, 2022.
Thank you, Major. Good timing. Any questions for members of the committee? Questions for members of the council? Councilman Ladisor.
Thank you, Chairman. Hi, Major. I assume that the work will be awarded to the two Warwick companies, first being that, for the most part, they're the low bidders on all of this, right?
Normally, correct, yes. It also depends on sometimes how quickly they can get work done for us. You know, if one vehicle or two vehicle goes down in our fleet, it really does tax the rest of the fleet. Because those vehicles are staying out, you know, almost 24 hours a day, and then those vehicles start to break down. So we do look to get the lowest cost first, but sometimes we do have to go to who's available first.
Understood. But the first attempt will be to the local guys. And if they can't meet your timeframe.
Correct.
I understand you'll need to do something else. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions for members of the council? Questions for members of the public? Questions or comments from members of the public? Identify yourself, please.
Rick Casella, Ward 1. Did you say 90,000 or 900?
90,000.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the public? Thank you. Found on page 17 is bid 2023-059, Firefighter Occupational Medical Evaluations. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Jason Urbanhauer, Assistant Chief of Warwick Fire Department. The fire department received two bids for occupational medical evaluations. We recommend that the bid be awarded to Atmed Treatment Center of East Greenwich Rhode Island as the lowest qualified bidder.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions for members of the committee? Questions for members of the council? Councilman Ladisor.
Thank you, Chairman. Hi, Chief.
Good evening.
Chief, when these medical evaluations are done, how long does it typically take for those invoices to be received and paid?
So when we do the majority of the department, it takes about four months to get through the process. And typically, we see those invoices 30 to 60 days after the completion of them.
I'm sorry, you see the invoices when?
About 30 to 60 days. Somewhere about a little more of a month, but they come, they get all these charges together and get them invoiced over to us.
Okay. So the reason that I'm asking this question is, I'm going back to, in the Munus reports, 2000, I'm sorry, February 17th. As of February 17th, you had year-to-date expended 7560, encumbrances 63,440, showing a zero available budget. Then, in 2000 and, well, in March, bear with me. In March, on March 2nd, year-to-date expended was $11,025, encumbrances 59,975, with a zero balance. Then in April, we had the same thing. We had $11,025 year-to-date expended, 59,975 encumbrance with a zero balance. Then it changed as of the Munus report I got today. And I don't know how, how those numbers, I'm sorry, it didn't change today, but it changed from prior, how the encumbrances varied from where it was back in February. Is that because invoices hadn't been received yet, or?
Correct. So what we do, once this vendor is awarded, is we take a purchase order out for the entire amount of that budget line. So since it's only one vendor, and this is the only thing we use that budget line for, we issue a purchase order to Atmed for to do not only the physicals for the entire existing department, but any new recruits that come on for their entrance physicals. And as those physicals happen and the invoices, we pay them off through that purchase order. So the ones you saw earlier were probably from the recruit class that came in in the fall, when they did their entrance physicals back in early fall. And then the second charge you saw was the second group of recruits that came in and started in January, when they did their entrance physicals. And now we're currently wrapping up the process for our existing firefighters, which is the large one that you're going to see. It's estimated, it's going to be around, somewhere around $59,000. Once we wrap up these exams that are going on, they'll probably be wrapped up this week or next week. So we'll see those invoices in the next couple of weeks. But that's all one purchase order. That just keeps drawing down off that purchase order as we use it.
Now, in 2018, did you have any classes in 2018?
We did not.
Which is why essentially you spent zero of the $60,000 budget, right?
Correct. And there was no bid ever awarded that year.
Okay. And the encumbrances right now, you have, do you have invoices totaling up to roughly $60,000? Or is that just the balance of what the $71,000 line item was?
Correct. That's the balance of what the original purchase order for the $71,000 was and what we spent on the recruit classes. So we have residual in there, probably $60-some thousand residual encumbrance. But we only anticipate about $59,000 of that is actually going to be invoiced. And then that purchase order will close out, and that rest of that money will go back to that budget line.
You said that money will go back into the budget?
Correct. So if the purchase order closes, so if we don't invoice the full amount that that purchase order was taken for, once we get the final invoice and we close the purchase order, any money that is different between what our invoices were in the purchase order, will go back to the line item as unencumbered money. It'll already be at the end of the fiscal year by then, but it'll show on the, on the year end.
So at the end of this month, which is the end of this fiscal year, your budget for $71,000 for these medical surveys, you anticipate you'll be spending all of that?
Close to all of it, yes. Not, not all of it.
And this is for incoming recruits, correct?
Nope. This is for incoming recruits for their pre-entry physicals. So we do a pretty sophisticated evaluation on them before we hire them to make sure that they're physically fit to do this job. But it also, we're also required to do an examination on every firefighter every year, just to make sure they're fit for duty.
So this is for all firefighters, not just new recruits?
Correct. All firefighters.
And new recruits, this is prior to them entering the academy?
Correct.
I'm sure I asked this question before, but I'm going to ask it again. Why, why are we paying for an evaluation for someone we haven't even hired yet?
A, we're required to by state law. So state law mandates we comply with NFPA 1515 E2, which is the fitness program. And they're requiring us, before we put them through a training academy and through the rigorous physical aspects of that academy, that we clear them by a doctor to make sure that they are physically fit to do this job. And B, we want to make sure we're getting firefighters without pre-existing medical conditions, so that we don't get a firefighter that, two or three years down the road, has a medical condition and has to retire. So we're getting healthy recruits.
Are there any departments, anywheres that you're aware of that require a potential candidate for employment to pay for these medical exams on their own?
I would suspect no, because we wouldn't be privy to that health information. So since the city's paying for it, we get the report. If the person, the recruit themselves pay for it, that report is up to them to give us. So we have control over what kind of an examination is done, and we have control over those results of that report.
And pass or fail this exam, the taxpayers are still picking up the bill?
Correct.
And you say that's a requirement by Rhode Island general law?
Correct. I can't put them through the recruit academy until I get them cleared for fit for duty by a physician.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions from members of the council? So to me, it sounds, Councilman, like the MEPS station, where you go, the military entrance placement, or as they call it, the military entrance processing station, where you have to go through those evaluations and everything else before they realize that you're probably, you know, enlisted in the Marine Corps.
I got news for you. They took one look at me and they said, we want you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments for members of the public? Members of the public?
I have a question. Are recruits considered employees at the time that they are recruits?
Yes.
Are they all 45 years of age or older?
45 years of age or older? No.
Oh, okay. Because the reason I ask that, and we've gone down this line before, because this money that you're spending is outside of the contract limitations. Because Section 6 of Medical Exam Spec- Because Section 6 of Medical Exam specifically states, "Every employee 45 years or older may request a complete yearly physical by a doctor of his choice." It says nothing about recruits. It says nothing about standardized medical or exams that have to be, you know, that have to take place. So we went through this before. So either you are in accordance with the contract or you are not in accordance with the contract. And the contract language specifically states that medical exams on the line item 35-335 is to be spent on employees 45 years or older that may request a complete yearly physical by a doctor of his choice, which examination shall include electrocardiogram, chest x-ray, complete urinalysis, and blood cal. Also, said employee may request a treadmill stress test, which should be administered at Kent County Hospital, blah, blah, blah. So we went through this before, because from the time period of 2012 to 2018, in 2012, this section of the contract was stricken from the contract and removed. And then Finance Director Ernest Zalimsky issued in his fiscal note 63-15A, the savings that the city would see based upon the medical examinations being removed, because in fact, that the money was not being spent correctly. That money amounted to $326,000 that was misappropriated. And in fact, in one year, we only used $10 and the 60,000 was taken out with a transfer resolution and put into the line item of overtime. And I'm sure some of the council members that were here in 2018 remember the heated debate where Mr. Harrington came out publicly when we said, "For the last six years, this money has been being spent outside of the contract limitations." And in fact, the medical examinations were stricken for the contract. And Mr. Harrington came back with a legal opinion stating that the city was in no way obligated to pay this. So the question becomes, if we ask the firefighters or any other union employee to do something that was outside of the contract boundaries and the specific language set forth by the contract, we file a grievance and they'd be held to pay. So why is our money being spent on recruits and other things when it is clearly direct conflict of the specific language in the contract? Someone needs to answer that question, because this practice has been going on far too long. And if you look at the transfer resolutions up until 2020, the vast majority of these monies were taken out and transferred after April 15th and used in the line item of overtime. Now, maybe we've spent some more on medical exams, but the fact remains that we are under no obligation whatsoever by contract, which has been ratified and stamped by the city solicitors, we're under no obligation to pay for any medical examinations for recruits whatsoever. So I, I just know in, you either are in accordance with your contract language or you are not in accordance. So if someone could explain that to me, I'd be pleased.
Chief?
So the obligation that the Fire Department has is to follow state statute. State statute says that we have to follow NFPA 1500. It's the Occupational Safety and Health for Fire Departments. In 1500, it mandates that we follow 1582, which is the medical evaluation section. And in the medical evaluation section, it has two components. One is, before I can put a recruit through an academy, I need to certify by a doctor that he's fit to, to, to complete that academy. And I need to certify that all firefighters, existing firefighters on the department on an annual basis are certified to fit for duty using the tests of NFPA 1582. If the contract says that anybody that's over 45 can request a medical exam, that's great. But I'm required by state law to do it for them every year anyway.
But that's not what the contract states upon this specific provision in the contract language. It does not state that anywhere. And so I, I can recall when we had discussions on the last contract, we had a discussion where the city ordinance usurped the state law. But now we seem to be flipping that, saying that the state law usurps the city contract. So the fact of the matter is, you, you just, you can't have it both ways. A contractor said here for specific reasons, right? You, you, part of this contract states when we're going to pay them for holidays. So if all of a sudden we decide not to pay you for the 4th of July, are we in accordance with the contract? Or are we not in accordance with the contract? So, I mean, in reality, this thing cannot hold water under any legal obligation, anytime, if this was challenged legally, which it was in the past. So we're in, you know, we, we have a, you know, a situation that's not solidified in the language and it leaves us in a quandary legally. And the city needs to clarify this, because if you go and you do this and they're spending monies that's outside the contract, you put us at risk. We're liable. And it's the taxpayers who pay for it. So I would suggest that before you pass this, you need to get a legal review. And if, which I have no problem if you change the language. But this is a contract. And it's been too often in the city law that these vague contracts have an expense which is borne back to the taxpayer. And this is a perfect example. And as Mr. Ladislaw knows, and Mr. Travis was here, the last time we had this, $326,000 just disappeared. We had one invoice for $10 on medical exams, one invoice. I still have those records today. So I think that the city council really should take the necessary legal steps to get clarification. Thank you.
Well said, Chief. Are there any further comments or questions from members of the public?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman?
Thank you. So to the solicitor, through the chair, to the solicitor. So in hearing those comments that we just spoke about, where state law is being referenced to go beyond the contractual requirements, I would compare that to when I came here for changing the healthcare co-pays and caps, et cetera. And it was said to me that actually there was no fiscal note provided, other than there would be no savings. But it was said that this will never pass muster, because you can't interfere or supersede or have any impact on the bargaining rights and the language in the contract. So now we have this example between the chief's comments and Mr. Cody's comments that we have a contract that governs what we can and cannot do, what we agree to, and anything beyond that is not agreed to. State law is being used as a reference point to go beyond the negotiated contract approved by this city council. Is that allowed?
Thank you, Councilman. I guess one point that you're acknowledging here is that perhaps items that are required under state law should be codified and within an agreement as a best practice. But as it relates to the standards that we have to follow, we are not allowed to contract in any way that violates state law for it to hold muster legally. If the state has a law, and I appreciate the, the reference, it's handy. We have to follow whatever is mandated by the state. There are many unfunded mandates that municipalities face on a regular basis. But whether or not, because it's not in the contract, we can't do it, I don't believe that that is accurate. I think if there is a, if there is a state requirement that we have to follow, we are obligated to follow through on such.
So your legal advice to this city council is we have no alternative but to follow the Rhode Island general law, regardless of what the contract language says, and pay the bill for these examinations?
We are required to follow state law. We are not allowed to contract to deviate unless they give us that deference. So where it says you shall do certain things, the municipality must follow those items. Regardless of whether they've been codified in contract, they're here before us through a public bidding process, which is the traditional procurement that we do within budgeted funds. So the fact that it's missing as a, a statement within, you know, an agreement within the contract, I think you're pointing out that perhaps it should be an item in the contract. But we are able to proceed at this time as it's something that, if state law requires it, we're required to do it.
So this should be an item that we give careful review to, not just on this particular contract, but any contracts, that if there's a particular state law, such as this, that it be included in the contract?
I, I would say that is a fair item to put forward, whereby an item that's mandated upon us and it's something that is part of employment practices, it should be part of employment contracts at this point, part of this potential upcoming CBAs, perhaps.
Now, let's take it, let's take it a step further. Suppose, we'll use this one as an example, but I'm sure there could be other issues come up in the future. What happens if this council votes not to approve something that is required by Rhode Island general law?
It would depend on that particular provision of law. It's too far to speculate. Sometimes items are prescribed within, you know, do this or this occurs. And sometimes there are general penalty provisions. I don't have the referenced requirements from the state in front of me, so I can't advise at this time on that.
But right now, at this moment, on this item, your advice to this council is, we have no choice but to follow Rhode Island general law?
I will always recommend that you do not violate state law.
I wasn't saying it to be a wise guy. I was saying on this particular item, we're not talking about a speeding ticket here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, please.
It's through the chair to the council solicitor. Are, are you intimately familiar with the law that the chief has, has stated, that he averts to?
I, I do not have the requirements in front of me that's being referenced at this time.
So don't you think that it would be good that if you were intimately familiar with that law, that it could be applied in this situation if we're questioning the relevance and the validity of the statement in the contract? As opposed to a guess?
I'm happy to conduct due diligence and work with the chief, the department, the council when, as it requires.
So, so I think just, just in lieu of that, i- i- it should be held until it's clarified. And I, I think in clarification, it can be as simple as that paragraph to be amended to state, "In accordance with Rhode Island state law statutes such and such," whatever it is, and clarify the language, right? I know when I have to inspect a building under state and federal statutes, my reports indicate, "In accordance with AWS Section D 1.5, 2.3", you know, you have to state it and it's clarified. So when you're looking at a particular item, your language is clear. This language just is not clear at all, right? And if, if you being the city solicitor, you're unclear on what the language is and, and, and I'm not suggesting that you need to know this off the top of your head. But if you don't, and you don't have it in front of you, right? That's a legal argument that should be held and that language be clarified. Because as, as it is right now, there's nobody in the room that can say, "The language of the contract, how we're spending this money is in accordance with the contract." And at the end of the day, you're either in accordance with your contract or you are not in accordance with the language of your contract, and clearly we are not. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman?
May I suggest that we take a five-minute break and give the solicitor an opportunity to check that?
I, I don't see that as necessary, to be very honest with you, Councilman. I was going to ask the chief. Chief, this is something that is required by state law, these medical examinations?
That is correct. This issue has come up several times. This has been looked at multiple times and there's, trust me, if the Fire Department can get out of doing medical exams every year, we would do it. But we're obligated by, by state law to perform these exams.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you. Next is bid 2023-052, maintenance and repairs for city-owned buildings. Hi, Christie.
Hi. Public Works is requesting to award the bid for HVAC maintenance repairs in city-owned buildings in the amount of $70,000 to D Larson, excuse me, NCAM HVAC for a period of one year, August 30th, 2022 to August 29th, 2023.
Thank you. Questions, comments from members of the committee? Questions, comments from members of the council? Questions, oh, sorry. Questions, comments from members of the public? Please state your name.
Rick Acella, Ward 1. Christie through the chair. This is for HVAC, like a maintenance contract?
Yes.
Or new install installations?
Maintenance and repair.
And what was the name of the company?
There's two. D Larson and NCAM HVAC.
Okay. And do we anticipate specific projects that will be taking on? Or this is just service contract on call need?
Both, yes.
So we do have some things they're going to be doing?
Well, I'm sure with the air conditioning season coming, I'm sure there's going to be repairs necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments from members of the public? Thank you. Oh, sorry. Councilman Ladislaw.
Thank you, Chairman. Hi, Christie.
Hi.
Christie, this, these particular items that are being bid, does this, is this a requirement under the prevailing wage laws, Davis-Bacon Act, or not?
I, I believe so. It would be in the bid specifications. I don't, I don't have those with me. If it's necessary, it's attached in the bid specification by purchasing before it goes out.
Is, can purchasing comment on that? Whether or not this is applicable to prevailing wage laws, Davis-Bacon Act?
Yes, I believe it is.
So is purchasing the one that is responsible for getting copies of those wage documents that are submitted to the Department of Labor and Training, actually required to be submitted?
No, that would be on the department with, it goes along with the invoice. The certified payroll goes along with any invoice that comes in and it goes through finance.
Okay. And that certified payroll that comes in with the invoice is certified by whom?
The vendor would certify their payroll and it would come to us.
And how do you know if that those wage documents are submitted to the Department of Labor and Training and approved by them?
It's, it's certified. When it's sent to us, it's a certified copy and it's up to the vendor to do so. It's stated, it's stated right there. It's by law.
And it says that they are, that they have submitted that to the Department of Labor and Training? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further questions from members of the council? Question, comments from members of the public? Questions, comments from members of the public? Thank you. Item number 7, 2023, bid 2023-073, workstations, laptops, tablets, printers, copiers, computer peripherals. Mr. Carlucci?
Good evening. Phil Carlucci, MIS Director. This is a request under City Ordinance 566, exception to bid for workstations, laptops, tablets, printers, copiers, and computer peripherals. The request is, has an effective date of July 1st, 2022, and runs through June 30th, 2023. The purchase will be made from the MIS Hardware Budget Code 25231, as budgeted, with a spending limit not to exceed $50,000. Because of the earlier conversation about multiple vendors, I just want to reiterate why we take, there are multiple vendors listed on this exception. When we first started doing this, the idea was, technology changes at too rapid a rate. We can't really give you a model or whatever's going to be available at that time. So we started the practice of going out to at least three of the vendors that were approved and asking for a quote on the exact same item that was available at that time. It's worked out fairly well to us. We'd always go to the low bidder. We attach all the, the low mini bidder, and we attached all the quotes to the documentation. all the quotes to the documentation. So we have a historical view to that. This has now become a little more slanted toward availability. Like everyone else, computer chips right now have become a hot commodity and we're finding more and more availability of items. Vendors are out six months, sometimes eight months. We've had a couple of times where they've just simply pulled the quote and said, sorry, we can't get this anymore. We thought we could, but we can't. We have to go searching through the other vendors. So just wanted to explain why we have multiple vendors in this particular situation.
Thank you so much, Phil. As always, you're well-prepared and come ready. Questions from the committee? Questions from members of the council? Questions from members of the council? Questions from the public? Questions from the public?
Rick Cosella, Ward 1, through the chairman. You said that much of the issue that we have with multiple bidding or multiple vendors is that we can't rely on supply chains and availability and things like that. Do we anticipate in the future that there'll be a time when we'll be back to single bidders? Or do you think this is the way we'll go going forward? I mean, there must be a, I don't know, a time when it's going to end and we'll be back to where we can rely on one person to be able to provide? I'm just curious what your thoughts are.
Please?
Actually, I mentioned there's two reasons that we have the multiple vendors. When we go out for a laptop, and you'll see this yourself, if you ever looked at the Sunday advertisements and you want to buy a new laptop for your house, you'll look through and you'll say, well, this one looks just like this other one at a different supplier, different store. But when I look at the details, something seems to be wrong, there's a big difference. Then you go and you start analyzing what's going on, and this comes with this software that doesn't. And then the next week, you'll see a totally different group. And it really goes almost like a weekly basis, if not every other week, maybe it's almost weekly. So we've started this practice, being able to say, I can't come to, if I were to go to council and say, give me a, go out and bid for these items, the vendors would all come back and we could pick at that moment what the right vendor would be, a choice to get the same item, because we're very specific in our details. The problem is by the time we get to council, it's approved, it's signed by the mayor, we go back, they go, oh, well, I don't have that model, but I have one just like it. That becomes a game. They understand it. So by being able to say, we have a need, these are our specifications, now you five people send your bids in, two of them say, I can't find anything like that, three of them send the bid in, we now have an exact time that says, you got it. Part of our letter that we go out with says, you have to be able to commit to the purchase order within two weeks. So once they come back with that, we commit to it, the order's set, and we have the lowest price, and we have the other bids, mini bids, I keep calling this, mini bids or quotes that show that the one we chose was the lowest bidder. Someday, the supply chain will be fixed. I'm not sure it would change our practice because of that.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil. Any further questions? Thank you. That concludes the bids that are 50,000 and above. Now we're going to open it up as I do, and I'm going to ask members of the committee if they have items they'd like to pull from the bid. I'm going to ask members of the council, and then I will ask members of the public. I'd like to start, I have one item I'd like to pull per request of the sponsor is bid 2023, it's item number 13, found on page 66, bid 2023-043, vehicle exhaust removal system maintenance. So I'll start within the committee. Are there any items that we would like to discuss from the committee? I have, from Councilman Gebhardt, it would be bid number 21 on page 106, bid 2022-435, removal fees for solar compacting receptacles? Are there any others, Councilman? Thank you. Are there any items from the bid package members of the council would like to discuss? Any items members of the council would like to discuss? Are there any items members of the public would like to discuss? Are there any bid items members of the public would like to discuss? Thank you. We'll go right to the first item, we'll go in order. That would be item bid number 13, bid 2023-043, found on page 66. I have a request from the sponsor to hold until July 18th, or a request from the department to hold until July 18th. If I may have a PCR? PCR 76-22. So may I have a motion, or I'll make a motion to hold PCR 76-22? Oh, I apologize. Third, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. I've gotten that look before. The next item?
Councilman?
Yes.
I'm going to ask, did you take a recess here? We're going to get an answer to a previous question before we move the whole consent calendar. So we just want to get that button up, we just need a few minutes for that.
Certainly.
We have a number of guests coming, so we'll pause the committee meeting here. We reconvene at 7 o'clock for the full council meeting. We have a few guests coming in. We will do that, and then we will reconvene the finance committee meeting after that. So just going to grab some additional information, and we will pause the committee meeting at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. The finance committee is now officially paused.
[inaudible]
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I call the June 20th, 2022 City Council Meeting to Order. The Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. McAllister.
Here.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt.
Yes.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser.
Mr. McElroy.
Yes.
Mr. Rix.
Here.
Mr. Snappy.
Miss Travis.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have two special guests this evening in two different groups. But first, I'm going to ask to have the Cedar Hill Parent Teacher Organization, please come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Then we'll play the National Anthem. Then we will do the formal presentations. So please welcome the Cedar Hill Parents Teacher Association.
To start, one more. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free
Thank you very much. So as I mentioned, we have two special guests here this evening, and I am going to call on Councilman Howe to introduce our first guest this evening. Councilman Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. So a couple of weeks ago, my daughter showed me a post on, a Facebook post on the Positive Warwick website. And it was an introduction of a young woman who said, who announced that she was looking for ways for her mother to get involved in the community. And her mother had just escaped the Ukraine, as you know, invaded by Russia. And her mother came here to join her daughter. So she was looking to include and to assimilate her mother into the city of Warwick and went to her neighbors looking for help. So if I may, call Dana and Natalia up, please, or any other guests. The newest resident to the city of Warwick is Natalia. And I'm gonna do my absolute best not to butcher this name. And if you're welcome to stand right over there. I apologize, so everyone can see you. Thank you. Is it Fadon? Fadon, thank you. Natalia Fadon came here to this great city of Warwick upon escaping the Ukraine, flying out in the middle of an invasion. As we all know, women and children were allowed to leave. And the men were conscripted to stay there and fight on. And what a job they're doing. This means a lot to me, and I'm sure I'm also gonna kind of invoke Councilman Lattiser and even my good colleague over here, Councilman McElroy. For even though there, the difference in the years, when we enlisted in the military, it was to fight the Bolsheviks, the Soviet Union. It was preparation. I in 1988, at the age of seventeen, you in the early seventies, that's all I'm gonna say. And we're all Cold War veterans. We're all veterans of the Cold War. And it was very heartbreaking, and we had a conversation about this. It was very difficult to see that there's a dictator trying to rebirth, if you will, that dark, cold time of world history. And to target, over the last ten years, the Ukraine and force them out. So I wanted just to take a moment, Mr. President. I want to thank you for allowing us to have this moment. To my colleagues, I just wanted to take a moment to give the city of Warwick a warm, heartfelt welcome to you, Natalia. And just by the, by the city council and by the city of Warwick, we flew the flag out front. And as you see, the council president has issued a proclamation to have the flag within the city council chambers to show our support to your country and their plight in defending yourselves against an unjust invasion. But also to say, welcome to the city of Warwick. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilman Howe. For our next guest, I'd like to call on Councilman Gephardt. However, I do have the preference that I went to Cedar Hill. My wife is a first grade teacher at Cedar Hill, so I'm very thrilled that Cedar Hill is here tonight. So, Councilman Gephardt.
Well, thank you, Council President. I wanna welcome, actually, if the PTO, would you like mind stepping over to the podium area? So I am in my second year as a parent of a student at Cedar Hill and have been incredibly fortunate to benefit from all the work of this great organization and the members thereof. This group works tirelessly to make sure that there's programming and activities and to fill the gaps that might exist in the, in the school. And then I was at a recent PTO meeting, and I was made aware that there's going to be a change in the president of the, of the PTO. And I had a special resolution of congratulations for outgoing president Danielle Gardner, who has served the organization and the school for almost ten years. And I'll read just briefly from the resolution, and then I'll give this over to you. So thank you for being here tonight. And thank you to all the members of the PTO for being here tonight. Where, resolved, whereas Danielle Gardner has devoted nearly ten years as a member of the Cedar Hill Parent Teacher Organization, numerous projects were initiated through her leadership, which will continue to have a revitalizing and growing impact on our community. And whereas Danielle has served as the president of the PTO for six years, and during Danielle's tenure, fundraising efforts have expanded from $5,000 a year to over $30,000 a year annually. Whereas Danielle's been instrumental in orchestrating the Sweetheart Dance, art masters, Halloween dances, trunk or treat, and the list goes on. Whereas Danielle untiringly devoted nearly ten years to the Cedar Hill community during a period of time that numerous projects were initiated. And whereas Danielle has demonstrated in many practical ways her deep and genuine love of our community. Whereas these years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interest of our community and our students, we appreciate all her assistance to the Cedar Hill PTO. Now, be it resolved, the mayor and the Warwick City Council express our sincere appreciation, thanks as well as that of our citizens to Danielle Gardner for her distinguished service to the community. And this resolution is signed by the members of the city council. So thank you, Danielle. Thank you to all the members of this, of the PTO for being here tonight. We're very appreciative. Thank you. I don't know if you wanted to share anything or talk about anything that's going on. You're welcome to.
I have my list.
My mic is yours.
I think you have, you listed out most of what was on my list, except I would like to say one thing, well, a few things. Councilman, thank you so much. I'm blown away by this, but it can't be done without a team. And everything is accomplished together with our team and the entire board. And we've had various iterations of our board. But this is a wonderful group of people who care very much about our community. Thank you so much.
Great job, Councilman. Thank you very much and welcome, and congratulations. And it's really a lot of work, and I know we appreciate it, so thank you. Also, for general communications, I just have one little note. As you know, the last day of school was today, so always, always fun. So congratulations to all the students that graduated, that are students that are moving up to the next grade or the next school and at very exciting times. And hopefully, the summer's just like this, beautiful out. So congratulations to our student populations on summer recess. Are there any other members of the city council have anything under general communications, announcements of congratulations, condolences, or community events? Councilman Lattiser.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just wanna take a comment that you made just a step further. You had mentioned your wife as a teacher at Cedar Hill. Really happy to point out that she's also the Golden Apple recipient as well. So give her the kudos.
Thank you, Councilor. She'll enjoy that. Any other general communications, members of the council? Okay, there are no executive communications, so we're gonna move to A on the agenda at this time. Acceptance of the minutes from the council meeting held on May 26. Councilman Howe, do you have a motion?
More favorable action.
Seconded by Councilman Foley. All those in favor of accepting the minutes for a May 26 meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Next is acceptance of the minutes in the June 6, 2022 meeting. Councilman Howe.
Move favorable action.
Second, moved by Councilman Howe, seconded by Councilman Foley. All those in favor of approving the minutes on June 6, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will extend, abstain, I was not at that meeting. Next up is a public comment. And I do want to, if there's any members of the public that would like to speak and address the city council on any Warwick issues, there is a sign up sheet right on the podium here. So now we're on public comments, Rule 41. After the general communications and prior to the consent calendar at each city council public hearing meeting, there shall be a 15-minute period during which citizens may comment about Warwick city government issues subject to the following stipulations. A, the total period of time for public comment shall be 15 minutes. Comments need to be brief in order to allow as many citizens as possible to participate. The topics for the comment shall be issues directly affecting city government. City council members will not respond to questions during the public comment period. The public comment session will terminate at the expiration of 15 minutes. Waiver of this provision requires unanimous consent. Again, last call, if anybody wants to sign up. And if someone can grab that for me, the... Okay, we have one individual who signed up, Rob Cody. Mr. Cody, I don't know if the mic is on. You might have to turn it on.
Thank you. So at the last council meeting, a couple of weeks ago, we were discussing the subject of, of putting the school bond for the new construction on the ballot for the residents. And people were allowed to get up and express their opinions. And unfortunately, while I was trying to express my opinions of why I was not in favor, I was continuously interrupted when I was trying to bring specific financial points. So I'll do that tonight. To rehash, the Stage Two application was voted on by this council on February 7 to be moved to the state. The Stage Two application was not completed until February 15. And it was not distributed until after that. I, however, got it with Mr. Cushman, and we went through it. And a couple of interesting points I wanted to bring to everyone's attention that didn't get to read the 2,000-plus pages as we did. If you go to Section 4, where it talks about Pilgrim and Tollgate on the financial projections, Section 4, Page 5, it shows a total budget breakdown at $350 million. When you go on Page 6, it shows the net debt service on the $350 million bond. Except, they have a $50 million error. The debt service is not projected out on a $350 million bond. It's projected out at a $300 million bond. And that projection shows the totaled service of these schools at $450,93,407, with the debt service to the taxpayer at $292,560,000. However, that's based on the $300 million bond, not the $350 million bond. So when you do the simple math and you extrapolate it based upon the figures using 4%, is a $74 million error. And so the cost to the taxpayer, after we're reimbursed by ride for the $157 million, the cost to the taxpayer is $367 million and change. That's what we owe to build two schools after our reimbursements, $367 million. That's, if everything goes perfectly, and I can tell you there's not a school in New England that's going perfectly on time or on budget. So you have a problem because the mathematics simply don't work. Human beings and politicians and people, we all lie. The only thing in this world that doesn't lie is mathematics. And the math clearly indicates that moving forward with these two projects, particularly at the same time, will be catastrophic for this city. In addition to that, I did a little bit of research. Been known to do that from time to time. And because we keep hearing the word "shared sacrifice", the teachers want new schools, the kids want new schools, we all have to have a shared sacrifice. So I did a public records request with the school department, and I wanted to know how many of the 1,902 employees of the school department actually reside in Warwick, which will be able to share in the sacrifice? I think you'd all be surprised. That 67.7% of all of the employees of the Warwick School Department, administration, teachers, staff, maintenance, the whole bit, 67.7% live outside of the city of Warwick. And the tax ramifications for the building of these schools has no impact on them whatsoever. 1,288 out of the 1,902 people do not live in the city of Warwick. Of course they want it. Let's build the new schools. So why don't we do this, since it's a shared sacrifice? The Barton Gilman Report from a couple of months ago, from the consultant that was hired by the school department, their own consultant did a fiscal analysis of the school department. And their exact words were that the Warwick School Department is a fiscal train wreck. That's their quote, fiscal train wreck. They further stated that if the teachers in the city of Warwick were paid on par with the rest of the state, there would be $20 million worth of savings from the school department. If they paid 20% of their co-pay for health care, there'd be another million plus in savings. So why don't we do this? Here's a utopian idea. Why don't we get all of the 1,902 staff members and say, we're gonna give you a moderate haircut. We're gonna trim your, your benefits and salaries to put on par with the rest of the state of Rhode Island. And then you guys vote if you still want to have the public schools built. Because with a minor haircut, we'd be able to raise the money to build the schools. So you can't have it both ways, right? So the legislative branch of government in the city of Warwick has been a historical failure for the residents because that's why we're $1 billion in unfunded liabilities. That's why the roads are falling apart. And that's why we can't afford new schools. Because we've given it all away. Every year, everybody gets raises. We're spending money that we don't have. And now we wanna go out to bonds to give the future generations the gift of $367 million in debt for two schools, which the math clearly shows this city cannot afford. You'll be putting senior citizens out on the street if you do this. You'll be putting senior citizens out on the street if you do this. So I keep hearing that we're going to have forums to educate the people. I just hope that the people in the wards, the ward councilmen, are going to read the actual 2,000 pages and give the correct information, because there was a lot of wrong information. Mr. Schaefer, on the Zoom meeting on February 7th, stated, "The schools are going to cost $350 million, we're expecting we're going to get $150 million reimbursement for RIDE, so the city will only have to go out to bond for $200 million." Those were his words exactly. That's wrong. We have to go out to bond for the entire amount. And there's a big difference from the juice on $350 million as opposed to $200 million. So there's been a lot of really bad information that's been put forth about these schools. And I'm concerned, I'll be able to pay the tax increase, but there's a lot of people that can't, and a lot of people are struggling, that are senior citizens on fixed incomes, and I don't want to see that happen. But it's going to happen, mark my words, and when it does, there's going to be two people in the city of Warwick that are going to come to you, and they're going to say, "We told you so, and you didn't listen." You people have to look at this. This should not go out to the voters. Voters base their vote on emotion. The legislative branch of government is here in power to crunch the numbers and to scrutinize this, and to see if, in fact, in the future, we will be able to afford this. But the numbers don't work, particularly with two. And what happens, I know we're not going to start them both at the same time, but so we're into six months to a year into one school, and we're putting the bonds out, a third, a third, and a third, as Mr. Schaefer said. These schools are going to go over budget, there's no question about it. I looked at the cost estimates, the estimates for steel, they're 400% under. Steel right now is 400% higher than what they've estimated in this budget, and I know that because I work in that business every single day. We have to be very careful, ladies and gentlemen. We want new schools, of course, we all want new schools, but the fact of the matter is, we've given everything away. Just days after the Barton Gilman report told the school committee, "You need to get, you need to get some concessions from your union members, they're overpaid in accordance with the rest of the state," three members of the school committee voted to give them another $8 million. So where does it end? So we can't build new schools and give every employee a pay raise every single year at 2.5% to 3.5%. You can't do it, the money's not there. So what I would do, if I were you people, I know we have a math teacher on the council, we have a lot of great math teachers in the city of Warwick, let's hold a forum and bring the math teachers in, and give the math teachers the fundamental mathematics of the projections to build the schools, and let them extrapolate the numbers, and have them make the decision whether it's affordable or not, because the math doesn't lie. When I see a $50 million to a $74 million error on a financial projection that's put forth by a government body, and another government body misses it, and they don't even have that information at the time that it's passed, it's problematic and it's worrisome. Again, I'm more worried about the future generations, my children, grandchildren, and particularly the senior citizens in Warwick that are so vulnerable right now. So I beg the city council, you really need to do your homework, because we're going to be watching. Don't do it for me, but don't do it for the school teachers. Do it for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, going to ask that we reconvene the finance committee. Good evening, the time is 7:29, and the finance committee is resuming. Yep, on this given limit moment. Lynn, do you want to just do it from up there? So the next item that was requested for discussion was bid number 21, found on page 106. That is bid 2022-435, removal fees for solar compacting receptacles.
My question was just, it seems like a tremendous amount of money to remove bins.
It does, but there are 10 units down there, and they're charging $625 per unit to remove them, so.
How, what kind of vehicle will they need to transport all? I haven't seen these, are they like dumpster size or like trashcan size?
No, they're, they're, they're small, well, small trashcans, they're solar compacting. So they're not, they're not, they're not bigger than this podium, they're probably smaller, but I, how they remove them, I is, I have no idea.
And it's not the kind of thing where we could drop them off at their loading dock or something?
No, they're bolted to the ground.
It's like $6,000, it's crazy.
Yeah, no, I, believe me, I understand, but they are bolted to the ground, and if there's any damage to them, you know, if we damage them in transit or whatever, then we would be responsible for paying that as well, so.
And I know you included in the bid package, the contract language that stipulated that we had to, you know, that it was at the less ease cost to return them, but was the, was the cost itemized out in the contract of what we could anticipate it would be, or they just say, "We have to pay them to remove them," and then they gave us this quote for $650 per?
The contract, it was a little over five years ago, so I don't remember the specifics. I know there were different prices per year for the lease rental, and then we got hit with having to pay property taxes on them, and then we got hit with some repair. And so I don't believe that the price per unit to remove them was in the contract, and this is not being requested as part of that contract, this is separate and apart from, because we sent them notification that we were terminating services at the end of, so this, the contract expired in December, and we told them we weren't renewing, and, you know, they needed to come get their units, and they sent us a bill. So I doubled, again, double-checked, made sure it was within the parameters of what we had agreed to five years ago, which is why I included it, I wanted to make sure everybody knew, and so here we are.
Hmm, okay. Yeah, I don't see the cost to remove them spelled out anywhere in the, in the preceding contract, but obviously I do see the, the line item here, 10, at $625 apiece. Yeah, I don't know, it feels like we're getting, taking advantage of a little bit on this one, and I'd be inclined to push back on the vendor, but that's, I guess that's beyond my scope here, so, just expressing my displeasure, I guess, is all.
I can understand.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Anyone else from the committee? Councilwoman Travis.
Councilman Girk, I have to know that I said the same thing. I mean, you want to come and get them, because why should we have to pay for them to take them away? You know, it costs us enough money when we're using them. And unfortunately, they were nice, you know, they have covers on them, seagulls kept away from the garbage, that was great, but they were so easy for them to get stuck, because somebody would put a pizza box in there, and that was it, that was done for the day, you know? And so we still had a lot of garbage, but I don't, I don't know the contract, because we don't do that part of it, but I don't understand why we have to pay them to take them away. You know, leave them there, you don't want them, not too bad, you know, but I agree with what you said.
Can we, could I request a PCR on this one?
We have a request for a PCR. Let me check my notes. I believe it's going to be 77 or 76? Bid 20, whoops, sorry. Bid 2022-435 will now be PCR 77-22, I just wanted to confirm it with you, thank you. Per request of Councilman Gebhardt. However, we will have a PCR, but I'm going to allow, I know that Councilman Lattiser is, wanted to make a statement as well. Councilman Lattiser.
Thank you, Chairman. I also concur with Councilman Gebhardt and Councilwoman Travis, and it troubles me that we don't have a copy of the original lease with this item. You know what? I like to see the numbers, I want to see how we got to where we are, and see how we arrived at a 6250 number. I like to look at the contract language. So it's concerning to me that it's not here, and, and digging into this a little bit further, when I'm looking for what's not here, it starts to get my attention to what is here. And when I look at Item H on page 108, it speaks to removal, and I'm saying, well, maybe perhaps I'll see something in that paragraph, but there's nothing in there either. But what it does say, not only in Section H, it says it in Section D, and it says it in Section E, that the customer is responsible pursuant to Section 5.2 below. I don't find a 5.2 in here, so I'm not sure if that's a typo, or if there is a 5.2, I'd like to see it, I'd like to know what it says. So my request or recommendation to the committee is to put a hold on this until we get a copy of the lease and Section 5.2 for what language that contains. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I have a quick question for you, Christie, follow up kind of what the Councilman said. On page 109, on the estimate page, we have a timestamp of June 2nd, the date that they gave us the estimate was May 3rd, and if you look right above the box, center of the page, where it identifies the service billable, it says quoted prices are valid for 30 days. So that, to me, that would seem that June 3rd, these quoted prices expired. So would probably make more sense to hold it anyway, so we can get another correct?
That's fine with me.
Yeah.
I'm not a big fan of this one system, so.
I understand, oh, I'm not saying, I'm saying, I'm just looking at this, and I do realize, I'm sorry, I do realize that, you know, there's a lot of things going on right now on this one bid, but from the points that Councilman Gebhardt brought up, to the points that the Councilwoman Travis brought up, to the points that Councilman Lattiser mentioned, it just got me, you know, then that sentence jumped out at me, so it seems like we're, you know, these prices, they don't have to hold us to these, so it'd be smart just to hold it until we maybe, yeah. So Councilman Gebhardt, any further? Thank you. All right, so your request is to hold, was that the PCR?
I'll move to hold. Bid 2022-435, now PCR 77-22, to the meeting in July 18th. To the 18th.
We have a motion, we have a second, to hold, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I apologize, yes, I'm going to ask the public, you're absolutely right, I didn't do that, sorry about that. Is there anyone from the public, one at a time, please? Anyone from the public? Thank you.
Thank you. If that's the last item that's up for discussion, I just wanted to revisit the question that was asked. If that was the last item pending, I wanted to just revisit some of the questions that were raised regarding bid 2023-059 firefighter occupational medical evaluations. There was a question about where the state law required the compliance with the standard. We have reviewed Title 23, Chapter 28.4, which outlines the scope and purpose of the chapter, which is to establish minimum requirements for safety and health program for a fire department. Section 4 generally requires that the National Fire Protection Association 1,500 standards on fire department occupational safety and health programs be adopted and adhered to by all fire departments. We're required to formulate plans and comply, the Department of Labor and Training is required to enforce. To get into the granular details, the references, the NFPA, National Fire Protection Association 1,582, Chapter 6 outlines medical evaluations for candidates. 6.1 specifically says, "A medical evaluation of a candidate shall be conducted prior to the candidate being placed in training programs or fire department emergency response activities." So therefore, the question of whether this is a requirement, it appears that state law requires us to comply with these cross-references to the National Fire Protection Association standards, of which one is to conduct these things, so it is appropriate that we fulfill such requirement.
Thank you, Solicitor. Thank you. That concludes the discussion on the bid package. May I have a motion on the, on the full consent calendar for PCR 73-22? Move favorable. I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much. All right, hold on, we have one item. If I may have a motion for acceptance of the minutes for the meeting held on June 6th. Second. All in favor? Aye. That concludes the Warwick Finance Committee meeting. The next committee that will meet is the ordinance committee.
Ordinance will convene at 7:44 PM. First is acceptance of committee meeting minutes from May 16th, 2022. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have.
Next, we have PCO twelve dash twenty-two, an ordinance in regards to the placement of no parking. Either side signs on Beechwood Drive and on Charlotte Drive east of Robert Avenue, and no parking this side signs on the Norly Lee side of Charlotte Avenue west of Robert Drive. This is Councilman Gebhardt, this would be second passage.
Would, this is supported by a traffic study, and I would request favorable action.
Any questions or comments from members of the committee? Any questions or comments from members of the council? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move favorable action, second passage.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have PCO thirteen dash twenty-two, an ordinance relative to establishing parking spaces near coastal resources, Management Council right-ofways. This is Councilman Gebhardt, this would be first passage.
Uh, thank you. Chairman, what you have before you is, is actually sponsored by me, but on behalf of the administration, we've been working with them on this. We sort of piloted this, this process of opening up access to the right-of-way earlier this year, actually, the ordinance you just passed is an outgrowth of that. But this goes a little bit further in terms of, rather than doing these on a one-off basis to allow, or to sort of deputize the police department in conjunction with the administration, who has this list of CRMC right-of-way, to go out and proactively do traffic studies to observe the areas and to identify if there are, you know, one or two parking spots in adjacent vicinity of those right-of-way that would, you know, thus make them more accessible to the public. You know, this comes from increased statewide pressure around right-of-way and access being blocked to them in many, in many cases, you know, directly over, over time. So happy to answer any questions. I know there's members of the administration here who are also happy to answer any questions. One thing that's important to point out, so this does not give the police and the administration carte blanche to go put up parking or no parking signs in your wards. This would still be done by resolution. We opted to go by resolution rather than by ordinance, just to add a little bit of expediency to the process, but it is still not in any way taking away from your power, you know, as, or this body's power as the city council to have oversight to where parking and no parking is allowed in, in our specific wards. So, thank you.
Any questions or comments from members of the committee? Councilman Ricks?
Thank you Chairman. I brought up one potential concern with Councilman Gebhardt, and it's my understanding that he would not object to a minor amendment. So as a matter of discussion, not a matter of proposing the amendment at this very time, the amendment would involve striking the language, specifically the, on line thirty-four, they're starting on line thirty-four. Striking the words "not to exceed two." And the reason for that is because oftentimes when ordinances are enacted, they're setting certain standards, and then even though the city council is not necessarily bound by that standard, in the circumstances where it might, might make sense to do things a little bit differently, let's say that there might be a circumstance where maybe it makes sense to have three or four parking spots, well, I don't want us to be enacting a standard where we are not necessarily taking away our future discretion, but setting up a particular standard where we're going to be pressuring ourselves to go a certain direction when that might not necessarily work for each and every circumstance. So I think that the ordinance would be better served without that particular restrictive language. There's also the concern that if we're talking about designation of parking spaces near right-of-way, then we also don't want that to necessarily bleed over into the general process that we use for traffic studies in general. I think that this ordinance otherwise does a good job of distinguishing between the general process that we use and the process that would be used for this particular circumstance. So I think that especially with an amendment to that effect, we can avoid any concerns about that particular kind of crossover or setting up a new standard where we're effectively not exactly binding ourselves, but setting up precedent that might not work in all circumstances. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from members of the committee? Any questions or comments from members of the council? Councilman Gebhardt?
I'll just, thank you Chair, I'll just respond briefly. So, I, we're not, I'm not married to the having not to exceed language in this ordinance. With that said, I do think it's important messaging, both to the public, but also to the police, that, because there may be some fear around sort of a long-established process of limiting parking near these waterfront areas. And this could, this ordinance could be construed in such a way that a resident now gets fearful that their entire street, because there's a right-of-way on their street, could become no parking. And I think that the effort that this two spaces is trying to make is to say, listen, just because you live near a right-of-way, doesn't mean we're going to turn your street into a parking lot. We're going to try to add limited and contained parking at or around that right-of-way, but are not endeavoring to make it so expansive that it should be, you know, a scary or a big, you know, hill to overcome. What, the other thing that I pointed out when Councilman Ricks and I spoke is that this in no way takes away from the council's right to put forward a resolution, or I mean, an ordinance about, or, sorry, a resolution about adding a no parking sign. So if, or to add parking, right, to take away a no parking sign. So if, if, you know, the, the WPD and the, and did a traffic study and said, hey, there's a right-of-way over here, we think it would support two parking spaces, and perhaps the councilman or councilwoman had a conversation with the neighbors and said, hey, there's a right-of-way over here, we're, we're going to add, you know, one parking space, and the neighbors said, you know what? This street's been no parking for too long, it's problematic when we have parties or friends over or whatever. It would actually, we would actually like the whole side of the street to be no parking. This in no way would take away our ability to then put in a resolution to have those no parking signs removed. So we kind of get to have our cake and eat it too on this, but also stay ahead of a lot of the, the push to make sure that we are complying with our, you know, charter and, and state constitution to provide fair and equitable access to the, to the coastway. So I would just leave you with that.
Any other members of the council comments or questions? Councilman Lattisor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To some degree, I, I agree with both of my colleagues, Councilman Gebhardt, Councilman Ricks. I think I have probably one of the largest amounts of public access in the city is in my ward, and it is not unusual to be getting calls from constituents who are on both sides of the fence, who are, they want no parking, or they want more parking. And a lot of the areas that I represent, these public accesses, they're used quite often by the locals, meaning the people that live in the immediate proximity, for kayaking, for fishing, you know, just sit on the beach, whatever. Some of them walk there, others drive there. I think the necessity of having some language in here is beneficial to all of us in dealing with both sides of the issue. You know, those constituents that say, forget it, I don't want anybody parking here, and those other folks that say, we have a right to be there, you know, we want to bring the boat trailers down, we want to do this or that or the other. We also have, let me rephrase that, excuse me, I also have, let's just say, some areas where folks have moved in maybe two or three years ago, and these no parking signs have been there forever. And they're upset about it because now their guests can't park there, or vice versa. There are no signs, and they're saying, I've got these people coming down here, they're parking on my lawn, they're blocking my driveway, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's important that we have some, at least some guidance on this. But I do agree with Councilman Ricks that putting a cap on the parking spaces, I think it's too restrictive. That's something that I would prefer to see each individual councilperson, along with their constituents, have a little bit of latitude in this. Keep in mind, well, I'll cite one street in my ward, this goes back several years ago, you know, we had this like major outcry about take down the no parking signs, I don't want them, other people want them. Oftentimes, in the proximity of these public accesses are corners, fire hydrants, driveways, you can't park there anyways, by law. So a lot of those things are already in place, but to restrict it to two, I wouldn't be able to support that particular language, because I think it's just too restrictive, not just on us as we sit here today, but on other elected officials that will sit here in the future. I would think it's a lot more palatable if we leave the amount of parking spaces up to the elected official in that area to work with his or her constituents, once you factor in driveways, corners, fire hydrants, or whatever. So with the delineation of those restrictions on the two parking spaces, I'd be fine with this. Thank you.
Do any other members of the council have any questions or comments? Do any members of the public have any questions or comments? Hello, hello, can you state your name for the record, please?
Sure, Aaron Mackesy. And just on behalf of the administration, to provide a little background and context on the proposed ordinance, obviously, for Councilman Ricks, if it is the council's pleasure to amend it, that's entirely up to you. My one recommendation on that, and sort of the perspective behind the number of right-of-way that is suggested in the language, is because the intent of the ordinance is to really allow the city to uphold its charter requirements, which is to provide open and available to all on equal terms access to the waterway. Emphasis on the equal, that's why I would recommend that there is a number, you know, that number is entirely up to you if you'd like to amend it, I would just recommend that there is a number so that it is equal. In terms of the number being high, what I would say is, I think that seldom is there a right-of-way where there's a opportunity for four or six spaces, based on the size of the, excuse me, the width of the road and location, often it would be one, two, or three. Anything above four to six, I think, would just be unreasonable based on the requirements. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, a question, please.
Councilman Lattisor?
So let's assume that, let's, let's say we, we approve not to exceed two, or we approve not to exceed four. Are we required under law to have a percentage of those parking spaces designated as handicap parking?
So I guess that would go to the Solicitor?
Can you repeat the question?
So thinking with, with regard to public access and right-of-way, and I'm thinking some of my constituents, some of my constituents are senior citizens, you know, they're handicapped, have troubles getting down to those areas. If we were to approve not to exceed two, and not to exceed four, and not to exceed whatever the number is, are we required to also assign a percentage of those spaces for handicap parking?
So the origin of this ordinance is to fulfill an interpretation of the state constitution regarding access to shore. Any additional parameters that would be applied under state law for handicap or other accessible parking may not have been anticipated or specified in the same way, shape, or form. So I'm not sure if the reservation clauses of particular things would be applicable to these items. We certainly already have the authority under the existing ordinances to designate handicap or other accessible parking places, and the council could utilize that in the circumstances that they deem fit. That's already in ordinances.
Well, the reason that, that question jumped into my mind is, I know in pretty much all commercial spaces and newest other areas, you have to have a certain amount of handicap parking. And I'm just wondering if we would be broaching that subject with this item, not knowing whether or not those designated spaces, or a portion of them, would need to be handicapped assigned?
I don't believe the commercial implications that you're asking about are, would be applicable here, but as I said, the ordinances already provide for the authority of the council to assert its role in designating such accessible parking. So if there's a circumstance that comes to light, this council can certainly act and address it, separate and apart of whether it's a itemized parking location from this particular authorization.
Thank you. So having said that, in, in consideration with Mr. Mackesy's recommendation, to me, it would make sense to, if we, if we're going to have a not to exceed, to have at least four spaces available, because some of these public accesses, at least in my ward, they're pretty large, and they're used quite a bit. Six, six may be an issue, but I think two is just too restrictive. Thank you.
Councilman Ricks?
Through the chair, a question, I suppose, to the administration. It was my understanding from reading the proposed ordinance that the parking spaces would just be general parking spaces, no special markings, aside from standard markings by the DPW that might indicate that this is the spot on the road where parking is permitted, as opposed to the other type of no parking signs. But what I'm curious about is, would there be, in the alternative, any special marking? But what I'm curious about is, would there be, in the alternative, any special markings where it would show that this is for access to the right of way only? Anything along those lines?
I don't believe that there would be that sort of notification on the signs. That's certainly a request that could be made of the DPW, depending on the traffic study. As Councilmember, obviously in your ward, there aren't any ROWs, but Councilman Lattiser, Councilman Gebhardt, Councilman Travis, et cetera, would be free to make those questions during the course of the traffic study.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, that is what I had expected. I imagine that that could potentially be an option, but I don't see it as a particularly attractive option, because then it would be restrictive against the residents from being able to park there. And I don't see that as being particularly beneficial in Warwick, as to the best of my knowledge, we don't have any type of residential parking program. So it wouldn't make any sense to me to have a non-residential parking program either, if you could.
Sure, just to follow up on that, also as Councilman Gebhardt mentioned earlier, this will come back to you for each individual traffic study. At that time, you would have the opportunity to say that in this particular location, there shall be no more than two parking spaces, parking not to exceed two hours at a time. That's one way to achieve the same goal.
Thank you. Yeah, so the short of it is, is that I certainly think that having general parking spots near rights of ways is very reasonable. I think that perhaps by some rights of ways, it may make sense to have no more than two parking spaces. At other rights of way, it may make sense to have up to four parking spaces being designated like that. I could imagine some other circumstances where perhaps even more parking spaces may make sense, but I think then that could be covered by the normal process here. So for this purpose, I would defer to Councilman Lattiser's reasoning, as well as the administration's reasoning, in that it makes sense to have a certain number specified in order to demonstrate to the CRMC, demonstrate to the state that we are trying to have a program here that sets a certain number of those parking spaces, even though we're not specifically designating them for that particular purpose. So I would suggest an amendment on line 34 to replace the word and the numeral two with the word and the numeral four. That would be my amendment, if there's a second.
So second, but then, for the purposes of discussion, does anyone have an issue with the number four, or having four spaces? Seems to be crooked, but Councilman Gebhardt?
I just want to go back to that we have a longstanding tradition, probably since the 60s in this, in this city, where parking has essentially been disallowed in all these areas by a memo between the, an interdepartment memo in the police department, which essentially in one fell swoop removed parking for all these areas. It's operated in that way since then till today. So I would just, in the interest of not letting things move too quickly, or to spiral out of control, or for the residents to have a lot of fear about what could happen in front of their home, I kind of like the limit where it is, knowing that in specific circumstances where you have residents who support additional, there is absolutely nothing stopping us from having additional. But this small addition to the ordinance sort of gives them a limited scope. There's a right of way here, look around, can we get one parking spot, can we get two parking spots? I don't want them looking proactively for four, six, eight parking spots, right? This is to provide limited access to specific rights of way. Now, my perspective might be tainted by the particular locations of rights of way in the area that I represent, which many of these are small neighborhood streets, and likely won't support more than one or two spaces. If we were to go more, we would be talking about making the entire street no parking, or an entire side of the street no parking. And I don't, I just don't want this to go from a good faith effort to provide limited access to CRMC rights of way into a much larger change that we didn't anticipate for the residents of these particular areas, who are graciously now going to be required to let folks park, you know, in their neighborhood in front of their house to get to the water, which, you know, they signed up for when they moved there, but we're going from nothing to something. And if we find certain circumstances that require more, again, it's still our power. It would just require a little bit more work, but you probably want to do that work anyways before you're going to override a 50-year precedent and just make it the Wild West in terms of parking. So I would just urge, we keep what we've got here, we put some thought into it, and you can always do your pleasure in certain circumstances. Thank you.
Certainly makes sense to me to go slower on it, given that, at the end of the day, it would take, what, max, two months for a particular situation to be able to get more parking at a location, to get the traffic study, to get the request in, to get ordinance passed. So even if you want to be more generous, maybe three, maybe even four months, but it'd be potentially far more problematic with the alternative route, with starting So my preference would probably be to stick with the two. Does anyone else on the council have any questions or comments? Councilman Lattiser, sorry, I didn't see you at first.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to Councilman Gebhardt's point about, you know, we had X amount of no parking signs put up over the years in front of these or along these public accesses, the reason they've all been taken down, or many of them have been taken down, is because they were put up there illegally. They were put up there through simple requests to DPW, they were not done with a traffic study, and those no parking signs were simply illegal. So that's why a large majority of them have been removed. I'm not clear as to how, I think Councilman Gebhardt said, if you wanted more than two, you could do a resolution to change it. I don't know how a resolution is going to trump an ordinance, because this is an ordinance. So we're going from all of these illegal no parking signs to now only approving not to exceed two parking spaces at these public accesses. Public accesses are there for access by the public. It doesn't say that they're there only for the residents in the immediate vicinity of these public accesses. It's a public access for everyone. Now, I've also had my share of calls from my constituents about people abusing the right to go to that public access. And it takes us too long this evening to discuss those abuses. So again, I certainly favor guidance on this and controls on this, but I would certainly prefer to have the discretion where it's applicable and in support of the local community for up to four spaces. You could be talking two spaces on either side of the street, or you could be talking four in just one. We just, we just did it, actually, in one street in my area, where there was parking on both sides of the road. It was totally illegal. Those signs were never approved. And we just changed it now to have no parking on the north side of that street, because three-quarters of the parking on the south side, you can't do anyways, because you're parked in front of people's driveways. So you can't do them anyways. So to me, it would just make sense to have that, that latitude of up to four where it works. Thank you.
So to Councilman Gebhardt's point, and in part to address what Councilman Lattiser just mentioned about having the latitude, so section 76-13 of the ordinances for Warwick will still allow us by resolution to determine the character type and location of all traffic signs and signals. So regardless of this ordinance, let's say two spots go in because of the Coastal Resources Management Council right of way, we then could use section 76-13 to add five more, 10 more, 20 more, whatever it might be. So we'll still have the normal power in which to add parking or restrict parking as we so see fit through the normal process, and means...
So does the city solicit, I'm sorry, the council solicitor concur with that interpretation? That's my concern, is do we have the avenue individually within our own wards to come before this council requesting four parking spaces, when the ordinance says two?
Well, we put an ordinance, would need to be followed by ordinance unless we give the discretion to change that. The language before you here would only provide that up to two spaces would be put, would be put by these access points where traffic studies permit. It doesn't even mandate that two spaces be put, because if it can't satisfy a traffic study, it wouldn't be eligible to qualify here. And to Councilman Gebhardt's earlier point, where multiple parking spaces would be appropriate, that traffic study would likely need to rely on the opinion that it's safe to have much more parking there than is currently allowed. Typically, this conversation would be taking place where there's no parking on that street, but now we are adding up to two. But if the traffic study were to go four, we could, we would likely be looking at changing the no parking restriction that's in another section of the ordinances. So ultimately, we're still dealing with ordinances here, and the one before us is allowing us to, by resolution, so, and each and every one of these items will be coming before the council for such analysis and review for its, and, you know, with the traffic study. That's where we're allowed to do this, based on the limitation that we put in the proposed ordinance before you. So in this case, the answer, I believe, for you is no. The, if we say in ordinance, we can do up to two here, unless we take some other action removing the no parking provision that is likely on the street, otherwise the point would be moot, right? If it's already parking allowed, would, how many designated spots would you actually need? The two wouldn't matter, you'd already have access to the whole street, right?
So if you want, if, if, in my ward, if I wanted to increase a particular area to four parking spaces, I would have to go through a completely different process to be able to do that. It's not just as simple as, okay, let's dock it a resolution, and, you know, ABC, public access can now go up to four, council approves it, we're all done. It would require a whole separate chain of events?
Because of the limitation in the language here, not to exceed two, you would have to either change this ordinance or carve out a particular exception to this ordinance through a subsequent ordinance.
So it's still the normal process as far as, right now, if there's no parking by ordinance on a street, you have to get that changed by ordinance, but you still have to do the traffic study and whatnot. So as long as there's an ordinance already on the books, yes, the process is different, just like how Councilman Gebhardt pointed out, they wanted this by resolution for the purposes of expediency, so you wouldn't have that same ability of expediency to get those extra spots. But again, to Councilman Gebhardt's point, if we're talking about going from nothing to something, you kind of don't want that expediency. It'll give time for people to figure out, hey, does two work or not? And then you can implement the process to get the ordinance amended, assuming that there's a no parking one already in place, so you can add additional. So really, all it does is kind of facilitate exactly what Councilman Gebhardt was hoping for, as far as kind of slow-rolling it.
If I may, the ordinance is intended to facilitate a fast track so that where these particular items can be implemented quickly, because it only takes one passage of an ordinance, of the resolution that would follow this, you wouldn't have to be constantly going through advertising, publication, you can effectuate it much more quickly and more flexibly address it in case there's an issue that arises as well. That's the reason, by authorizing us to do it through resolution. If there were some particular circumstances that need to exceed that, it would likely, you know, need some other specialized review.
But the difference is, we have these areas now with these legal no parking signs, we don't care about the illegal, they're legal no parking signs. We can request the traffic study to remove whichever no parking signs our constituents prefer to have removed, but there's no limitation to how many parking spaces will result. Or as a result of removing those no parking signs. So you go from no parking at all on those areas to, if the traffic study supports it, remove the traffic, the no parking signs, and you can park wherever you want. So I don't see how one extreme can offset the other extreme.
So think of this like a shortcut process to get some access to your right of way, limited. What we don't want to create is a shortcut process to make significant changes to allowed parking in a particular area that bypasses the ordinance process of two passages and advertising, right? So in its effort to open it up to rights of way, we can have some expediency around a limited number of spots, and I think that, that limit should be small. But if you really want to open the entire street, it should go through the ordinance process of being advertised, making everyone aware, letting people come here, tell us, no, 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 we can't have that, I got a bus that comes this way, and it never, you know, all the types of things that come when people know. The danger here in making this too big is that by resolution, you know, I could, I could dock it one tonight, next week, boom, or, you know, next meeting, pass it, sign, you know, now there's parking on the street, and it went through a shorter process. I think that shorter process is justified because the scope is limited and confined. But the wider it becomes, especially with no limit, the more scary it will be to the residents and also to us, because it could have unintended consequences. We can still fix it. If we want 20 parking spaces on a street, have at it, but you have to do it by ordinance, because that's the rules. This is saying, if there's a public right of way, part of having it be a public right of way is you can get to it, and we're going to prioritize in a limited way, making that a reality. So I don't know if I answered your question, but...
So I still see that creating other issues. So you limit it to two parking spaces, actually, Mr. Mackesy... Actually, um, Mr. McAfee kind of touched on that. So how, what's gonna prevent someone from going down there and just parking there for the day? You got two people, two cars, um, could be a car and a boat trailer. You're down there, and you're out for the entire day. Now, no one else has an opportunity to use the two parking spaces that you've got designated. How do you plan on dealing with that?
If I may, Councilman, uh, a lot of these rights of way are in close proximity to each other. To use the example of down in Ward Five on Warwick Neck, uh, on the side of the bay, uh, facing Jamestown and Newport, you often believe you have three rights of way that jump side streets. So you have, you know, one here, an empty street, one here, an empty street, one there. Similar down in, in Councilman Gebhardt's Potawatomi. They're in close proximity to each other. So if there's a spot that's taken, uh, there's clearly another spot marked, uh, in one of the other rights of way. There are, are 38 throughout the entire city. So if one is taken up, there's certainly space, uh, for, for another folk to go somewhere else, uh, close by. Just to touch on a comment Councilman Gebhardt made about those signs, one other thing that this ordinance does is it cracks down on illegal, uh, no parking signs. So if we were to, excuse me, if the council was to make an area allowable parking, there'd be no sign designation there. A neighbor could just come by, as they have in the past, and put up an illegal no parking sign that they buy at the store or they make at home. By designating a parking sign, specifically a particular number of areas, it makes sure that people don't break the ordinance that way.
So what will those signs say?
That would be up to the council, uh, when you pass the resolution based on the traffic study. As I mentioned to Councilman Ricks earlier, uh, you could, along with the traffic officer, make that to say limited two-hour parking each, but that's entirely up to the council.
So the council would still have, or each individual council person would still have flexibility in what's going to take place, at least up to two parking spaces? Thank you.
Any other members of the council have any questions or comments? All right, so first, uh, oh, any members of the public have any questions or comments? So first, let's deal with the motion. Mr. Chairman?
I just wanted to correct, uh, and clarify one item earlier regarding handicap parking. The ordinance I was referencing provides, um, by resolution, the access, um, in front of houses, uh, residences, uh, requesting the handicap parking. So it is not a clean, we can do this at any point in time through that resolution. However, the language here provides flexibility to the council, as we were just finishing the conversation about how, um, the council has discretion when it authorizes what limitations it will include in this fast-track process. So if a restriction or an allocation for such a purpose at a particular location is warranted and needed, it, it could be done via that authorizing resolution, just as any other qualification you wished to place amongst how long you can be there or otherwise.
So through the chair to council. So is that something that we need to do now? Or is that something that is done later?
Uh, no. If, for example, there were a particular location of concern in your ward, and you docketed a resolution to identify two spaces, for example, if the traffic storm, uh, study warranted, um, those types of limitations, as long as they're consistent with the traffic, traffic study, doesn't need to be proactive by just not included by the traffic study or, you know, contrary to anything in it. You would have some discretion in how to, um, regulate that access via the resolution that follows this ordinance.
All right, so first, we have the motion to amend. We need a vote on that. All in favor?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Already? So now we have the ordinances originally presented to the process, just in case. Do any questions, does any member of the committee have any questions or comments regarding the ordinance as originally drafted? Do any members of the council have any questions or comments regarding the ordinance as originally drafted? Do any members of the public have any questions or comments regarding the ordinance as originally drafted? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, unless I'm mistaken, that would conclude ordinance at 8:30 PM.
The Public Safety Committee comes to order at 8:31. First item is acceptance of the minutes. Uh, from the May 2nd meeting. Do we have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
First item, uh, is claims. PCR 6922, the first claim is Robert Blum. I had a question on that. I would like to either hold it or award it. The recommendation is for $50. I don't know why, there's no information. So I would like a motion to hold. So we get the information. What I really like is to award it in the amount of $128.40, because he has an invoice there, and there's no one saying that we didn't demolish his mailbox.
Mr. Chairman? Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry. How you doing, Mr. Walsh?
Uh, the, the department in the past has recommended $50 as, um... Sure. The department in the past has recommended $50 in cases of damaged mailboxes, because the State Department of Transportation has a policy in place that rec, that provides, uh, compensation of $50 when they damage somebody's mailbox specifically. It's not a state requirement in the same way that, um, the pothole language is prescribed, so we have discretion, but that is historically been why the department recommends $50, is because that's the state policy.
Thank you for that.
But it's not a state mandate.
Thank you for the clarification, but it still leaves me a little irked. I'll, I'll use that word, because nowhere in here does it say that. You know what I mean? The information coming down to us. Based on the recommendation from council solicitor, I, I, I withdraw what I asked, and I like approval in the amount of the $50 recommended by finance.
I would, uh, I would actually tend to, uh, support the amount of $128.40, just because the state, uh, has that particular policy. I don't think it's right for Warwick to, uh, limit itself in that regard. I think that, uh, if we have a constituent who, uh, through no fault of their own, and I, I saw the packet of information here, it's actually quite something, where the pictures are there, it looks like it's, uh, one of those doorbell cameras or the like, the frames are taken, where it shows the, uh, the plow approaching, the plow hitting it, and then the plow driving off. Mailbox is there, one frame, gone, the next frame. Well, I think it would be fair for that constituent to get, uh, compensated in full. And based on the invoice, the estimates, and just general knowledge from previous situations of knowing that these mailboxes do get expensive, I think that the $128.40 is reasonable, so I would, based on that, I would tend to support, uh, that amount.
Would you like to make that motion?
Uh, so move.
Second.
Any questions from the, any other questions from the committee? Any questions from the council? We have two. I'll start with, uh, Councilman Lattiser.
Thank you, Chairman. So the issue here is the snowplow doing its job, plowing the snow to keep everybody happy, and obviously, or at least based on these pictures, it damaged the mailbox. If you look at the location of that mailbox in correlation to where that snowplow truck is, it's not like the snowplow truck was right on top of the mailbox and took out the mailbox with its plow. This snowplow truck is a good three feet off the street. I should say, off the edge of the road. So, yeah, we have a responsibility, I guess, in replacing that mailbox. This has happened in my ward in the past. As a matter of fact, one of the mailboxes that came up to play in my ward, I thought the price was completely ridiculous. And, um, I did meet my constituent, and we were able to get it taken care of a lot more efficiently than what was initially thought. Also, keep in mind, wall pole outdoors is a very expensive product. Everything that they carry is very expensive product. So that would beg the question to me, are we replacing in kind? Was that a metal, everyday mailbox that was there? Or wasn't it? So, I don't know. It's your pleasure, those are just some of the things I think we need to consider when we're talking about paying for these mailboxes. Thank you.
Councilman Sinapi?
So my only thing was, regardless of what was destroyed, personal property or property on someone's real estate was destroyed, and it was the city that did it. So if they sued us, unless something else happened, they're getting the money. So seems to make sense that it better, this be done in a way that is amicable as opposed to us telling them to shove off or to have a third of what they paid. Because even if it wasn't a mailbox, even if it was just some expensive thing on their lawn that they happen to keep there, because they think it looks pretty, I mean, we'd be on the hook for it. And it looks like that won't normally happen, but based on the pictures, it looks like it was, that truck was moving some heavy slush, and it got some air. So I can definitely see that taking out a mailbox and then some. I'm just glad it didn't go into somebody's parked car, that would not have been good. So my, my own thoughts would be to pay the, the full lowest amount for the purposes of the liability aspect, but that's just me. Same thing as Councilman Lattiser said, it's your pleasure either way.
Thank, thank you. Before I go back to you, council, any, any other members, uh, Councilman Lattiser?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Again, I'm not arguing about paying the $128 or the $50. I'm simply, simply giving everyone food for thought going forward. We've had, you know, mailbox issues come up in the past. This isn't about $50 or another 75. It's about what, what's doing right and fair for everyone concerned. I simply wanted to put some of those observations on the record, so in the future, we keep some of those things in mind as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion in the second. Any members of the public? Any members of the public hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item, uh, I'm recusing myself for because of a personal and somewhat professional relationship with Mr. De Petrello. I'm handing it over to Councilman McElroy.
Okay, uh, this is, um, I don't have the paperwork on, I just have the dollar amount. Okay. Looks like, uh, it was approved for no amount of money. However, I have talked to, uh, this claimant, Mr. De Petrello. He was actually working for the city at the time. He, uh, damaged his vehicle, and this took a while to go through the paperwork, because he thought he was gonna be reimbursed by the city based on him working, uh, at the time. They told him to go through the claiming process, and he did that, but I guess it was after the time period. So I will, um, are there any other questions from, uh, Councilman Ricks?
Yeah, I would also just add that, uh, I saw that the city recommended denial of the claim because it wasn't reported within seven days. But I do see a police report that was dated three days after. So even though the claim paperwork was not actually filled out, it's my understanding that the reason for the seven-day requirement has to do with, uh, making sure that it's timely reported so that somebody just isn't making up when and where this happened. And so I think that the report to the Warwick Police, in my opinion, that satisfies that requirement, and that gets us to that same place of, okay, let's look at the claim on its merits. The statutory cap for recovery is $300. All of the estimates are in, well in excess of $300. We know that that pothole on Atlantic Ave was there at that time. We know that it's a, it's a tire killer. And so I would, uh, based on that, uh, be in favor of approving an amount of $300, and, uh, would make a motion to that effect after, uh, the rest of the council and the public has an opportunity to comment.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Councilman Sinapi?
So Councilman Ricks basically said all the same things I was going to say. So I guess just ditto what he said, and in addition, the report, or rather, the description of the incident slash claim mentions that the individual called it in to DPW right away and got the pothole, it helped get the pothole filled within a day. So in addition to the police report, which I agree satisfies that whole requirement to make sure this wasn't made up and to help get the problem resolved, he did what many claimants don't do, and went above and beyond to make sure it got fixed immediately.
Councilman Lattiser?
Thank you, Chairman. So along the lines that you brought up, Chairman, I had the same observation that, um, Mr. De Petrello was, was actually on city business. And, um, my question is, why isn't the trust paying the entire amount of the damage? He was on city business, he's an employee of the city, he's getting compensated as a member of the, um, zoning board. So why isn't the trust paying the whole amount as to us being handstrapped by the, the ordinance of $300? Question to the solicitor, or to the administration? I don't know.
So I can't speak to what internal processes the, uh, administration undertook in their review of this item, um, but what's before us is, uh, a request, uh, under potholes. The one, one point I would add... The one, one point I would add that wasn't made yet this evening was this item did, the incident did occur during emergency authority times under COVID and for the past two plus years, there's been leniency to the seven day application due to the difficulties surrounding completing paperwork as well. So for consistency's sake, I would offer that for the committee and council's consideration as well. But as it pertains to your question on whether or not to go to the $300 cap or beyond it, that's a position for the administration appears to want to speak to.
Good evening, Susan Nahabidi, and on behalf of the administration, and this is a matter that can certainly, this is a matter that I can certainly present to the, to the city solicitor for his review and to pursue coverage through the trust.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last thing you said, Chief.
I'd be happy to, you know, have the city solicitor, Micro Solo, review it and, and possibly, you know, present it to the trust to see if our liability policy with them would cover something like this and that would enable the claimant to pursue, you know, the maximum amount of his damages for, to his vehicle.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would just note that given the estimates provided, it would fall under the trust's typical application. So that process may bring the item right back before us in a similar request again.
Yeah, I can't hear it either.
Sure. Given that the item is below the threshold that the trust typically adjudicates claims on our behalf, the item would likely be returned to us for our own consideration anyway.
There's your answer?
I just have a question. What is the dollar amount when the trust gets involved?
I believe it's 2,500.
Could, could we give more than the 300?
Our legal liability under the state statute is, shields us from anything beyond $300 filed within seven days and consistent with all the other protocols that are spelled out in the process. So it's a difference of a legal liability standard versus potential moral or other standard. But the city has its own discretion to fulfill its, its discretion here in the application of the circumstances presented before you. Historically, we do not go beyond the $300, but that's situation by situation. But that's the, the legal liability that we're culpable to or accountable to when we want to decide that we are responsible and we would like to compensate accordingly.
Okay. Councilman Sinapi?
Just a suggestion, I'm willing to bet that the, if the claimant goes through the city process, assuming that is deemed acceptable to do so, that he likely will not be limited to 300, as like an employee as opposed to a member of the public. And assuming that's the case, it might make more sense to hold it, to give him the chance to do that, or at least give him the opportunity to attempt to do so. And then if it doesn't work out, it's held, he can come back and say, or just let us know it didn't work out. That'd be that. That way he can at least get 300.
I think I'm going to make a motion to hold it until the July meeting to give the administration a chance to look this over.
I agree. I think that it seems that the city council would have jurisdiction in this area, but it would make sense for us to get clarification on that. So I would certainly second that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions from the public?
Do I hear any questions or comments from the public?
The next item is item number three, Chelsea Mellow.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear a vote. So there was a move, move to hold it to July 18th came from, it was a two zero vote?
Two zero.
Okay. And that's PCR 7822 being held to July 18th on a two to zero vote with the chairman abstaining.
All right, moving on, item number three, Chelsea Mellow. The recommendation is to deny. Any questions from the committee? Councilman Ricks?
This one was a bit confusing to me. There was an invoice in the packet dated March 18th, which would have been a couple of weeks before the date of the incident on April 4th. But I did then see three other estimates and that invoice wasn't marked as the invoice. So first, is the claimant Chelsea Mellow present this evening?
I don't see her.
I don't see her either. Doesn't hurt to announce, but yeah, there's a lot of confusion in this one, especially since as remarked by the department, Sandy Lane was repaved just six months before this. So it's unclear to me if there is some sort of nuance here, then it should have been stated in the packet. I wasn't seeing anything like that to that effect. So I would tend to agree with the recommendation of the department to seem, nothing to change my mind otherwise.
Any other members of the committee? Members of the council? Councilman Lattiser?
Thank you, Chairman. In reviewing these documents, I asked myself the same question as Councilman Ricks, you know, what's the deal with March 18th invoice and receipt? They're one and the same versus the estimate from Fontaine Tire on Tuesday, the April 5th. The only thing for what it's worth that I came up with was that this claimant purchased four brand new tires in March, March 18th, and then this damage occurred on April 4th. That would be the only thing that makes sense to me. But what's concerning is it shows on the recommendation memo, estimates from three places, Town Fair Tire, Fontaine Tire, and I don't know what that last one is, M. Benz Graham. I don't see anything in my binder of an estimate from M. Benz Graham. So I think that somehow this application is incomplete unless somebody has something from Eminem that, you know, says something different. I don't see it.
Thank you. Councilman Sinapi?
So I don't have the paper version, so I apologize if it's different. I have the M. Benz Graham, my, the file I have, the PDF that I was provided for $138, $138.79 for a Toyo Celsius Tire 205 slash 60R16 92H for what it's worth. That being said, this, I agree with the initial.
Oh, I got it.
The explanation on this one as far as it being confusing. But that being said, we do have the, the longstanding policy of if we're going to deny a claim, the, the preference was to reach out to the claimant to let them know, hey, it's going to get denied, to give them the opportunity to actually show up because there's been times when, sure, there were claimants who should be denied, but there's also been other times when it turned out like, oh no, it's a good thing we let them know because they brought more information and resolved the confusion and everything worked out. So just a thought.
Mr. Chairman? I, I do stand.
Councilman Lattiser?
I do stand corrected. In my binder is, it looks like a photo shot. And until you look down at the little fine print, you can't see that M. Benz Graham, whatever it is. So I do have that in my file.
So may I paraphrase in the words of the great Fonz? You were wrong?
No, that's not what I said. I, I said I stand corrected.
Oh, okay.
You didn't hear anything about, I was wrong.
I couldn't resist, I'm sorry. Anyway, any other comments from the public? From the public? Okay, so the recommendation is for denial. Do we have a motion?
Move to hold to the next meeting to give the claimant that opportunity.
The only, I, I was under the impression if it gets denied, they're notified and then they can reapply, correct?
Mr. Chairman, if, to fulfill the intent of the policy that Councilman Sinapi spoke of, of ensuring one last opportunity for due process here, when we recommend a hold, we give it a PCR, there will be one last outreach to the claimant and that will give them the opportunity to come for that last chance to discuss the item. So if the intent is to do that, Councilman Ricks has initiated a motion to hold to July 18th.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's PCR 7922.
7922. And last item is Amy Whalen, the basketball hoop. Recommendation was to approve. Do we, any comments from the committee? Any comments from the council? Any comments from the public? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve in the amount of $159.99.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, you had one other set of minutes to approve, the basic 16th minutes.
I'm sorry, I can't hear, I'm sorry.
There are one other sets of minutes to approve.
Miss, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, what was the item that you just moved through?
The last one was Amy Whalen for the basketball hoop.
Okay, I, I didn't hear that being spoken to. I would like to speak on that.
Councilman, I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're asking. Oh, oh, all right, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, you know, I know that we don't like to take up issues in each other's ward, but this particular item with this basketball court, this happens in, I know it happens in my ward, you know, I see it from time to time. I'm fairly certain it happens in other wards as well. And if you look at the pictures submitted for this, that basketball hoop, first of all, it's on city property. And how I come to that conclusion is if you look at the neighbor's fence, neighbor's fence, one would assume, is not on city property. And there's got to be at least eight feet over there, somewheres thereabouts. You look at the recycling bin or the trash bin, it's just about in the same plane from the street as that basketball hoop, which is about maybe eight to 12 inches away from the asphalt. The hoop itself is sticking out into the street. It's got to be at least two feet into the street. The truck is certainly the same height or taller than that hoop. The truck has got to get to the ash, the trash can to be able to empty it. So in defense of the sanitation drivers, what are they supposed to do? This basketball hoop is on city property. The rim is sticking out into the street close to two feet and they have to pick up that bin. So are we expecting our sanitation drivers to drive around these things all the time or not pick up the bin? So again, I'm not trying to step in someone else's ward. I'm speaking to a situation that could happen in any of our wards. This basketball hoop is on city property and the rim is sticking out into the street and our sanitation workers have got to do their job. So those are my concerns with this item. Thank you.
Councilman Travis.
Yeah, oh, well, riding around the city, riding around my ward, I see these in the street, never mind on city property. This one at least is in a little bit. I don't know about it being like, I see in the picture, it looks very close to the recycle bin, but I know that they made the recommendation to pay it, so I guess they felt they were in fault. That's how I look at it, but.
Thank you. Councilman Sinapi?
So I'm, I don't really have a dog in this fight. I just wanted to point out, one, the description of the incident and claim, that leaves a lot lacking as far as I'm somewhat confused as to how this came about. I know it says it was damaged by the recycling truck, but that tells me nothing. I don't know if it was damaged by the little arm that comes out. I don't know if it was damaged by the truck. It seems unlikely that the driver would have just clipped it, given the, how high it is up off the ground. But in any event, with my trashcans, I get a little orange notice and everything if it's near my mailbox or even if they're near each other. So I'm confused as to how this person's trashcans are right next to a basketball hoop, a boat and a car. And it hasn't been flagged yet. I'm not 100%, but I think, I don't know if DPW keeps a record of the ones they flag when they leave the notice as far as, oh, you can't have your thing there. But if they do keep a record of that, I would think they would be able to check and say, hey, we flagged this already. They didn't move their thing and sure enough, just like we told them what happened, there was an issue. And also they didn't give it enough estimates. They only gave one. That's it.
Thank you. Yes. Councilman Ricks?
Yeah, I'll stand by my earlier recommendation. I think that if the recycle bin was in that very location at the time that that damage occurred, which we don't know if the recycle bin was moved after, then I think that that's a situation where the recycling truck, that driver is under no obligation to try to thread a needle there. The resident, if they want their trash and recycling to be picked up, they should be putting it on the seat so that it's clear of the basketball hoop. And, uh, well, I think that the department director probably has a better handle on the facts of the situation on this one. And if the department director was recommending approval, then I'm inclined to agree with them since the, I, I would anticipate that like so many circumstances where the director feels that it, the city was not negligent, I would expect that the director would recommend rejecting the claim. So for those reasons, I would stick with my recommendation and my vote to approve in that amount of 159.99.
Thank you. Okay, hold on a second. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we have a motion.
Move to approve, 159.99.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have minutes from the June?
May 16th. May 16th.
May 16th, my bad. I'm sorry. May 16th, the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second by Councilman McElroy, all in favor?
Aye.
The committee is adjourned at 9:04.
Finally, this evening, we have the Public Properties, Land Use and Community Affairs Committee.
Public properties, it's, oh, skip out, skip out, skip out. We don't need you. Thank you, sir. Your help was invaluable. I'm kidding. You, you did well on my stead. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Sir Walts, for the assistance. I appreciate it.
The time is 9:06. The City Council Committee on Public Properties, Land Use and Community Affairs comes to order. First up, acceptance of the minutes, May 16, 2022. Do we have a motion?
Move, approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First up, PCO 9-22, An Ordnance Amending Appendix B, The City of Warwick Comprehensive Plan 2013-2033, Chapter 12, entitled Future Land Use Map 12.1, entitled Future Land Use Map, F L U M, AR Building Company, Inc., applicant. This is up for second passage. Looking for a recommendation from Councilman Howe.
More favorable action?
We have our recommendation. Do we have a motion?
I'm more favorable action.
Uh, second.
Very good. Do we have any comment from members of the committee? Members of the council? Members of the public? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. Second, and finally, we have PCO 10-22, An Ordnance Amending the Zoning Ordinances of the City of Warwick, AR Building Company, Inc., applicant, looking for a recommendation from Councilman Howe for second passage.
More favorable action?
All right, we have a recommendation, do we have a motion?
Favorable action?
Second.
Very good. Any discussion from members of the, members of the committee? Discussion, members of the council? Any discussion, members of the public? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, 3:00, second passage. The City Council Committee on Public Properties, Land Use and Community Affairs closes at 9:08 PM.
Thank you.
Good evening again, and welcome back to the full City Council meeting. If you're following along on the agenda, we've done roll call, we've done the salute to flags, we had two special guests, we did announcement of congratulations, condolences, community events, we've done executive communications, we've done the acceptance of the minutes, and we've done public comment. So, we are now on the consent calendar. First up is PCR 73-22, A Resolution Relative to Bid, Committee Report, Finance.
Favorable action?
For action, Councilman Howe.
More favorable action?
Seconded by Councilman Gephardt. Go ahead, Councilman Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bid 2023-071, Munis Support and Updated License. Bid 2023-055, Vehicle Body Repair and Painting. Bid 2023-059, Firefighter Occupational Medical Evaluations. Bid 2023-052, HVAC Maintenance and Repair of City-Owned Buildings. Bid 2023-073, Workstation Laptop Tablets, Printers, Copiers and Computer peripherals. Bid 2023-074, State of Rhode Island Network and Radio Circuits. Bid 2023-072, Security Hardware and Laptops for B.C. Bid 2023-075, Base Training and Related Travel Expenses. Bid 2023-076, Office Tracker Software. Bid 2022-029 Charlie, Quarterly Fire Alarm Inspections and Testing. Bid 2023-043, Vehicle Exhaust Correction, with, uh, I withdraw that one. Bid 2023-041, Maintenance Service for Fire Department Air Compressors and Equipment. Bid 2023-042, Service and Maintenance Agreement for Stryker EMS Equipment. Bid 2023-040, Structural Firefighting Boots. Bid 2023-039, Structural Firefighting Gloves. Bid 2021-246 Bravo, Overhead Door Repair and Replacement. Bid 2023-050, Repair and/or Rebuild Hydraulic Cylinders. Bid 2022-437, Repairs to W16. Bid 2022-435, Removal Fee Correction, Withdraw. Bid 2023-051, Monthly Service and Maintenance for Composite Toilets. Bid 2023-057, HVAC Filters. Bid 2023-048 Alpha Pest Control Services. Bid 2023-048 Bravo Pest Control Services. Bid 2023-054 Vehicle Window Tinting. Bid 2023-063 Paper and Food Products. Bid 2023-058 Coffee Products and Services. Bid 2022-071 Probate Court Advertising. And bid 2022-072 City Clerk Advertising.
Thank you, Councilman Howe. Are there any questions on the bid docket? Okay, um, next up is PCR 69-22, Resolution Relative to Claims, Committee Report, Public Safety.
We have a couple of items. We have PCR 6922, Item Number One, Robert Blum, in the amount of 12840. And then we have Item Four, Amy Whalen, in the amount of recommend approval, in the amount of 159.99. We have two other items that were given PCRs and held.
Yep, we'll do those after.
Okay, so those are the two.
Those are the two. Any questions from members of the council on the claims? Okay, hearing none, it's been moved in second, the clerk will call the roll on the consent calendar for favorable action.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Sinapi? Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes consent passes.
Thank you, consent calendar passes. Councilman Howe, a number of items have been removed from the consent calendar. Committee Report, Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we had formerly bid 2023-077 Electricity Contract, that has been assigned to PCR 74-22, favorable action with amendment.
Okay, Councilman Howe, will you make the amendment, and we'll get a second, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
Yes, Mr. President. Per the Finance Director, the request was made to change the kilowatt rate from .1175 to .1180.
So, you're making that as amended?
As an amendment.
Do we have a second to that amendment? Seconded by Councilman Lattiser, Councilwoman Travis, Councilman Gephardt. Okay, any questions on the amendment? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll on the amendment.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Sinapi? Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes to amend.
Thank you. Councilman Howe, we move as amended.
Move, favorable action as amended.
Seconded by Councilman Foley, Councilwoman Travis, Councilman Lattiser, Councilman Gephardt. Any questions on the amendment, or on this? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll for favorable action as amended.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Sinapi? Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes favorable as amended.
Thank you. Favorable as amended. There's a second item, Councilman Howe?
Yes, Mr. President. Former bid 2023-046 Street Improvements is now PCR 75-22. The, uh, it was favorable action with amendment.
Okay, Councilman Howe, would you make the amendment, please?
The amendment was to add Deambra, Miozy, and Cardy, to, Cardy to the bid with J.H. Lynch.
Okay, that is the amendment. Do we have a second to the amendment? Seconded by Councilman Gephardt and Councilman Foley. Any questions on the amendment? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll for favorable action on the amendment.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Sinapi? Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes to amend.
Thank you. The amendment passes. Councilman Howe?
Move favorable action as amended.
Seconded by Councilman Foley, Councilman Ricks, Councilman Gephardt.
Why am I blanking on the term? Point of order. I would like to propose a second amendment.
Go ahead, Councilman Ricks.
Propose an amendment that, similar to the, the manner in which we amended a similar bid two years ago for the same item, that we provide a right of first refusal to the lowest bidder, Cardy.
Get to that. Seconded by Councilman Lattiser. Any questions or discussions on the amendment? I have a, I have a, just a quick comment on that. Obviously, we want to get the best price as available, I just don't want to see this being held up even further, having to wait to get a response from the lowest bidder on each one. I think this is kind of at the discretion of the administration, and this is kind of an administrative, administrative action, that, how they go out and do this. So, I, I'm not going to support this amendment, just on the grounds of, we need to, we need to get going here, I don't want to hold up, because how long do we wait for the right of first refusal from, from the company? What if they say they're going to do it, and then they don't do it, and we've lost time here? So, I, I just, I want to get paving and let the administration and the director, that's part of their job, is to, to reach out, get these things moving, so I, I don't want it to look like a, kind of an overreach, put an additional, additional thing on there. I just think that the administrator's, administration's job is to get these, these roads paved in the best way possible. I think something like this, it could just delay it. Again, how long do we have to wait to get the first refusal? There's a number of projects that needs to go, let's get going. So, that's, that's my, my thoughts on this. Councilman Ricks?
I'd suggest that, and to clarify the amendment, I think that the right of first refusal should be a period of, say, 24 hours, so that we're not holding things up. If Cardy can't get back within 24 hours of getting the notice by, you know, email or whatever the procedure may be, whatever the standard procedure that the administration uses is, then, go ahead, move on to the next one. But I think that 24 hours would be plenty of time for everybody without tying anything up either.
Well, I think we already have them. We have an amendment, and it's been seconded, so do we vote on that?
We do have an amendment before us that's been moved and seconded, if we want to either withdraw the amendment or amend the amendment, those are the options at this time.
Okay.
No need, no need to amend, that was my intent with the first amendment anyway. Thank you.
So, the clerk will call the roll on the amendment. Councilman Howe?
I apologize, thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to go on record as saying I also will be voting against the amendment, as I want the streets paved, and I'm going to give the trust to the, to the, to the administration and the four companies that are prepared to do the job. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the clerk will call the roll on the amendment to add right of first refusal.
Mr. Counselor?
No.
Mr. Foley?
No.
Mr. Gephardt?
No.
Mr. Howe?
No.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy? Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Sinapi?
No.
Ms. Travis?
No.
Two yes, seven no, motion fails, amendment fails.
Amendment fails.
Sorry.
What's that?
My bad.
Okay, Councilman Howe?
Move as amended. Favorable action.
So, originally amended, so back to just adding the three companies.
Yes, yes, Mr. President, the, the original amendment.
Okay, seconded by Councilman Foley. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll. Favorable action as amended.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser? Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Sinapi? Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes to amend.
Thank you, motion passes. Okay, next item that was pulled off, Councilman Howe?
Thank you, Mr. President. Formerly bid 2023-043 Vehicle Exhaust Removal System Maintenance is now PCR 76-22, Request to Hold Till July 18th.
Hold till July 18th. Next one, Councilman Howe?
Yes, Mr. President, the final one is bid, formerly bid 2022-435, now PCR 77-22, Removal Fees for Solar Compacted Receptacles, Request to Hold Until July 18th.
Hold till July 18th. There was also two items that were pulled off the consent calendar for public safety, Councilman Foley?
The first item is PCR 78-22, is a claim by Paul Di Petrillo. I'm sorry, I recuse from this one. Should I let Councilman McElroy?
It's been reported in as, recommendation is to hold to July 18th, so. So, for action, Councilman McElroy?
Hold till July 18th?
Yep, seconded by Councilman Lattiser, Councilwoman Travis. All right, we'll do a roll call vote on this, because we're going to have someone to accuse. Motion to Hold Till July 18th, the clerk will call the roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley? Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Sinapi? Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Eight yes, one abstention.
Thank you, motion, it will be held until July 18th. Next one, Councilman Foley?
PCR 79-22, Chelsea Mellow, uh, recommendation is to hold. Uh, hold till July 18th. That finishes the consent calendar. We are now moving to unfinished business. Uh, number one is PCO 9-22, uh, Committee Report, Land Use.
Recommend favorable action.
For action, Councilman Howe?
Fa, more favorable action.
Seconded by Councilman Latessa, Councilman Gephardt. Uh, any questions, uh, that were not brought up earlier this evening in the land use committee? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll for favorable action for second passage.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Latessa?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, second passage.
Thank you, second passes. Uh, number two this evening is PCO 10-22, Committee Report, Land Use.
Recommend favorable action.
Uh, for action, Councilman Howe?
Move favorable action.
Seconded by Councilman Latessa, Councilman Gephardt. Any questions that were not asked earlier this evening in the land use committee? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll for favorable action on second passage.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Latessa?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, second passage.
Thank you, second passage. Uh, we're now moving to new business. Number one this evening is PCO 13-22, Committee Report, Ordnance.
Committee recommends favorable action.
For action, Councilman Gephardt?
Move favorable action.
Seconded by Councilman Latessa, uh, Councilman, uh, McElroy. Uh, any questions on this? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll for favorable action on second passage.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Latessa?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, second passage.
Thank you, second passage. Uh, we're now moving to new business. Number one this evening is PCO 13-22, Committee Report, Ordnance.
Committee recommends favorable action.
Uh, for action, Councilman Gephardt?
With favorable action.
Uh, moves, uh, do I have a second? Uh, seconded by Councilman Howe, Councilman, uh, McElroy, and Councilman Foley. Any questions or comments on this that were not asked or any ordinance committee earlier this evening? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Latessa?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, first passage.
Thank you, PCO 13-22 passes. Uh, we're now moving to, uh, unanimous consent. Ward one, anything to docket under unanimous consent? Ward two?
Pass.
Ward three?
Yes, Mr. President. Uh, on May 2nd, 2022, as part of the claims package, PCR 54-22, the council denied a pothole claim for Mr. James Boyasian. It appears, however, that Mr. Boyasian may not have been provided the adequate notice regarding the meeting, nor of the council's likelihood of denying his claim without an opportunity to be heard. I urge my colleagues to provide Mr. Boyasian, an 87-year-old citizen, due process.